Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we'll start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda.
Just wanted to, again, from the city, I came from another meeting to just say happy new year, but more important to say thank you to everybody. I know that volunteerism in the city is absolutely amazing. You've had a tough ride this year with the strike and all, and I want to say thank you on behalf of the council for all of the work you do. And we look forward to more collaborative association with the school going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to you as well. All right, any signative public comments, any amendments to the agenda?
No.
All right, any announcements?
I have a couple. Arabian Nights, school performances are planned will be on Thursday, January 8th, Friday, the 9th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Also, the South Burlington High School Annual Speech and Debate Tournament will be held on Saturday, January 10th, beginning at 9:00 o'clock. The high school is full of students from all over the state. Petitions to run for the South Burlington School Board, three year term, two year term, are due to the City Clerk's office by January 26th at 5:00. A couple other components, pieces to announce is the high school cybersecurity team have now advanced to the regional competition. They've won the Vermont State Cybersecurity Competition, and they are moving forward. And another important thing for everyone to hear is the middle school elevator is now working and up and running, the brand new. So if you have a chance to walk into the front lobby, take an immediate right and take a ride on the brand-new elevator, you can enjoy a nice ride, or you can take a left and enjoy a ride on the other one as well. Anyway, that's all I have, Elizabeth.
All right. I will also add, we have a copy of the position paper that the board put together on the back table for anyone who wants a copy of it. Speaker Schaff Smith actually solicited feedback from all stakeholders in the public education delivery system toward the end of last year, and the board made a decision to submit that to him with our various proposals. So that has been submitted to him, copied to the governor, as well as Pro Tem Campbell and the Secretary of Education, Rebecca Holcomb, too. So we've got some good feedback on that, and we're hoping we're getting some good feedback as the legislative session starts, too. And congratulations to the newest House Representative, who was sworn in today, I believe.
Yep.
Great. And do you want to speak to what committee you were assigned to?
Judiciary, not Education. But that doesn't mean I can't advance bills on education issues.
We're working on some right now.
Great. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on to City-School collaboration.
So one of the items, again, we have a lot going on. Elizabeth and I have a meeting coming up currently planned for the 20th, and that's between Pat, Kevin Dorn, myself, and Elizabeth. So that's upcoming. We haven't had one since our last meeting. One of the things that I did get from the city was the Airport Planning Committee is wanting to begin to meet. And part of the committee assignment is that there is a rep that's needed from the board. It doesn't have to be a board member, but there needs to be, you know, somebody who will serve in that capacity, representing the school district. So it doesn't mean that a school board member can't. You know, one of the things I was thinking of is, I do and have asked our administrators in some capacity to be participating, and we do have an administrator that actually lives in that area that may be of interest, perhaps, for me to ask Carsten Slinter if he would, on your behalf, be part of kind of the liaison between, you know, the committee and the board and be able to provide us with some update. But that would be my suggestion to that committee. Again, I don't necessarily know the frequency of it, but I know it's an important topic for the board to be paying attention to for the Chamberlain Community School.
I would concur. I think it would be helpful to have a board representative who lives in the community, whether it's Carsten or another representative. So if we can get some feedback on Carsten's interest, that'd be great.
Certainly we'll do that. And I don't know necessarily how soon they want to have that selected, but I'll keep you posted.
Anything else on City-School?
Nope.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 7, the Master Planning Financial Stewardship Plan.
So master planning is, it's in full swing, and I'm challenged by trying to help keep everybody up to date. I know Dan Fleming came to the tail end of one, maybe, Dan, I'm not, I'm not sure, the last two-thirds of a meeting. And so they have had now four meetings, and the last one they had just this past Monday, which was kind of an ad hoc group to come together to understand and meet with the demographer. I'm going to hand you out the, and just give you, again, another piece of paper on the PowerPoint presentation that was shared with the folks that attended from the task force around some of the demographic data. Important to note that in the information that I'll share with you tonight is also information that's out of the demographic information that Mr. McGivern has provided. So this is in connection to the master planning and visioning, obviously, understanding the population projections in the city, as build-outs are planned and developments are planned and city center is planned. What does also that mean in respect to student population increases and decreases? So, I mean, you'll, it's likely you'll have some questions as you read through it, and certainly if you have those, we'd be happy to help respond to those around particularly the assumptions that are made. I found it very informative, particularly that he's coming from, obviously, as a demographer, he's, looks at all of the available tools, but I found him to be extremely interesting and, I would say, very accurate in the view at South Burlington. Certainly, all of the data that he used seemed to check with me as he talked about them. Some of the pie charts that he sees, and again, I know those folks that are in the audience can't see that, but this is basically the age population, our newest children to our community, to our more senior population. And this curve that he addressed was interesting around what brings students into the, or children into our system. And that was very interesting, and again, in the summary that's there. I meant to bring the cover sheet that the city has. So the city's posting up all of the agenda and all of the minutes. Off of the city site, under Committees and Meetings, you'll find Master Planning and Visioning, and you, there's now, I would say, nine or 10 documents, this being one of them, that are on this site. So you can access the site. Currently, there's, I'm going to say, nine or 10 options that are currently out there being explored by the committee, just being looked at, and cost-benefit analysis are being, are also being done, or will be done at some point as we look at narrowing that. The community meetings, we had a community, our first community meeting was slated to happen in the end of January, that January 20 timeframe. It was going to be around the same time we had the Steering Committee meetings. That's been, that's been moved as a result of kind of the need to, the need for the task force to work a little bit more on gathering of the data. So there's a lot going on, a lot of options. We have a very, very engaged group, and I would encourage everyone to read the minutes and also take a look at the website for other information. So I believe at the next meeting, I would like to ask a representative, Art Klugo, who is the Chair of the Task Force, perhaps, to be able to come, and we'll put, we need to preserve some time on the agenda if we can, to just talk a little bit more about master planning and visioning, the task force work. It's a little, it's a little hard to continue, I mean, I can't repeat everything that's going on with the task force, and they definitely have been doing now a lot of work behind, you know, prior to or after the meetings. So, anyway.
Are you able to speak, David? I know you probably didn't want to get into
The details?
...the level of detail, but there's a three-year period starting 2018 where we will see, or this demographer is predicting, probably the most significant drop the district has seen in at least the history that's tracked from 2011, with about, it looks like a loss of about 90 students in the K through 12.
Yeah, you're on the...
I'm looking at the total district enrollment page.
Mm-hmm.
Generally speaking, with the biggest of that being the first year, and then two smaller years after that. Was there any specific detail behind that?
Yeah, I know he would be able to give you that. It's definitely tied to the, to the birth, the... Well, it's, 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 you know, and he talked a lot about this, this middle group of the 20 to 24 and the 30 to 34 population as they, as they change and move up through the system. And those are kids that, or those are, those are families and individuals that don't necessarily result in, in children into our systems.
Well, that timeframe, though, these kids are in our system now, if they're...
Yeah. But I think it's, it's more about the incoming kindergarten populations that they, and that, he talked a lot about that, and I'm certainly happy to, I'll circle that, and let's get some more information on, on why. Let me make sure where you're at here.
Yeah, it's this period here.
And the 20, 19, 20, 20?
Yeah.
Yeah, right in this drop.
I'm sure that's not the only significant trend, but that's the one that jumps out at me.
Sorry, again, I would be happy to hear more feedback, and you have questions. We'll keep that active.
So David, I recognize this is focused on South Burlington, but given what's going on with our high school population, do you have any idea what's going on up in tuition land?
You know, somebody asked that at the meeting, and, you know, it's somewhat replicable, you know, in other communities. Our N is much different, though, than some of the population up there. So I think that the easy answer probably, from my, what I've learned, is it's, it's probably similar, the drops and the increases. But again, a lot of this is tied to the census, the 2010 census, the live births, and then planned unit development, transitions of property. You know, he went through the whole litany of options that derive kind of that forecast. So I don't, I don't really know, obviously, part of the conversation, as you look into our, the data, has choice data in here, too, for us when we look at population projections. And so his population projections on the, on the islands, he did look at that. I don't, didn't look at it in the same level of detail, I believe, but he provides predictions around the choice inbound students. And again, part of what I'm using tonight in the, in the budget development is, in part, that forecasted number as well.
So I have, I guess, a bigger picture question. I want to make sure that I understand what the end product is, which my understanding is, it's going to be a recommendation for the board, and the board is going to have to make a decision, and it actually may have to go up to the community to make a decision. But I just want to make sure that I understand that the thought process that's going by the, I mean, it's a great task force, lots of really good people there, but when we get a recommendation, is there going to be enough information there for us to really look at? Because I don't think we're just going to accept it one way or another. We have to really understand the options that were looked at, that were discarded, the reasons why the certain options were discarded, and the rationale for their recommendation. I'm just raising that just to make sure that, that, you know, I don't want all this great thought and, and great process going, and then it comes to us, and there's not enough for us to base our decision on. So...
Yeah, good question.
You don't have to kind, I just want to just raise...
Well, the onset of this, of the committee was to really ensure that we have cross-representation from the city, able to provide information and option information to both the school and the city council around currently more of a master plan within the city that has, obviously, the opportunities that we're looking for from the city perspective and what we believe we, we need, although we don't really know what we need, although we certainly have concerns as a result of pressures at the airport, pressures and concerns at this school. What are the options that might continue to advance the district and also be cost-effective? And so those are, those are, those are definitely lenses that they're, they're looking through. They've identified opportunities that they know are important, both city and school. I feel they're well aware that they like to get as many of those opportunities checked off, but being mindful of the cost to the taxpayers. Now, again, forecasting that, that the impact to the taxpayers is, is the hard work, and also understanding the tax increment financing effects of city center are also part of the dynamics that are at play. My hope is that, right now, we're at 10 options. I don't really want the board or the council to receive 10 options, that you're going to have you weigh through all kinds of things. It's going to need to get narrowed down with community input. It's going to be part of the community meetings and community survey that helps boil down those 10 to two or three that meet the opportunities and then allow the board and the council to say, we need, we need a little bit more on this, we have questions on this, and be able to then make a decision on whether we're, we're good to go, or we need to go out and, and look at other options, you know, that would include engaging the community in a vote, or whatever the case may be. There's definitely a nearer-term one, a nearer-term, nearer-term option, and that is, what are we going to do with this school? Is it, is it, you know, is it in a place that remains viable for a good number of years? Also about the airport, and again, as I said earlier, the Airport Planning Committee will begin to advise on that as well. So I think that's, that's what, that's what the board deserves. I do think, again, as I said earlier, about having somebody from the task force come and provide, be on the agenda a little bit more frequently so that you're, you know, a little bit more aware of some of the activities and/or posing some of the questions that you might have like this, so that there's some conduit back and forth. I mean, I'm trying to be very careful around the participation. I know Kevin is, too. I'm, I'm not sitting at the table. I'm in the audience, and there is a chair. Obviously, we have Frank Locker, the Master Planning and Visioning Consultant, and really, they're, they're really running it. There are times where there's some clarifying questions around what we currently have, or, you know, some of those specific things around our community, our, our sectors, around where boundaries are for schools, et cetera. But other than that, it's really, they're engaging in the discussions.
But I think Martin's asking a good question, which I think the board needs to just remind itself of, and I think your notion of having somebody here updating is good, because we're getting, like, the enrollment data's coming to us in a vacuum, and we may even look at that in a vacuum as it relates to the, the next budgeting cycle, or even a couple of budgets out. But at the end of the day, I do think the board has an expectation that the master planning group will come forward with one or more configuration recommendations, the financial impact, and hopefully benefit to taxpayers, and equally importantly, you know, what, is there an upside to learning opportunities for kids?
Correct.
And I think that's in the scope of the project, as I recall, as it was designed. So I'm sure the team is thinking that way. But again, as we get bits and pieces of information out of context, we'll need to kind of come back to the charter of the group. Other questions on master planning? Were there any specific comments on financial stewardship separate of that, David?
Not at this time.
I think we did get...
Some correspondence.
Copies of Dan's, yeah.
We could do that here, or we could do it in budget, and maybe that's better to just do it here. I did make copies of Dan's email.
Yeah, if you recall, at one of our board meetings, we had elected Dan to be the board representative to kind of get a debriefing on the updated financial stewardship plan. So what's included in your packet are really Dan's notes of his review with John and David.
Yeah, it's by your side, I believe.
Bart Micali.
People see that.
From Facilities.
So maybe this is a good opportunity. Again, Dan, myself, and Bart, I was going to kind of couple this into budget, but I think it's appropriate. It's a big part of our budget that we're going to talk about in a, in a bit. But Dan, myself, John Stewart, and Bart Micali, Director of Facilities, met yesterday. And Dan's, you know, Dan's, you know, has been fairly aware of the stewardship plan, which I want to say has been in existence solidly for now seven years in the district, and really a great tool for us that we've continued to add to. John will say, keep adding to it from its initial idea. But it's been a great help for us to kind of forecast our, our needs and identify the cost measures associated with them. So Dan, the four of us had the opportunity to connect, and really, this was a board initiative, just to see how, how we're doing and what are the kind of near-term, short-term objectives, and what is that looking like? So, Dan, I don't know if, if you would like to provide some feedback to your findings, specific to the...
I would reinforce that I think that this practice of the district administration to continually look at what's happening in the future, what needs attention, what surprises popped up, and how to react to it, try to find a way to get the expenses at least anticipated and ideally smoothed out over time so that we don't end up with a, with a, with a big shock. This is not to say that things don't happen, that were unexpected, such as what happened at Orford School, having to deal with the, the situation in the classroom that ended up having to put essentially curtain drains around, around the building. And some of the stuff that's gone on with unexpected costs associated with abatement charges related to, I guess, most significantly, the windows project that was expected to run a little more smoothly, then it ended up actually going. But I think the process is a great one. I think it, and I think it's a healthy one, and, and I think it's going well. I commend John and Bart for their efforts in doing this and trying to find a way to make it all balance. There was one thing that I think we spent a fair amount of time on that's causing a little bit of pain and churn right now, and that is that the scope for the elevator in the high school, and I'm sure you'll talk more about that when we come to the budget thing, is, has had to change because of some realities of implementing a real project and trying to do that in a very limited amount of time, mainly the summer break time. So I'd just rather than elaborate on that, I'll wait till you get to that in the budget. But bottom line, I think it's a great process, and I think we have the right level of interaction going on.
Thank you, Dan.
If you guys have another view.
Thanks for representing the board. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, Superintendent's Report.
So we have three items. We have the budget announced, tuition rate, and the Budget Communication Plan. And I think without further ado, we'll get going on the, we'll get going on the budget. By your side, also, I believe that in the, for the audience, there is a handout there available for you up on the column, with this included.
So Elizabeth, unfortunately, you're going to have to do a little bit of a rotation or move, unfortunately.
No problem. Just to make sure I get all my papers.
So we're going to...
I don't know if it's viewing angle, but there's another chair over here.
Yeah, I should have just moved over there.
We reckon I just probably not easy for people to see. Again, you can follow along, some of you with, with what we provided. Well, so this is going to go back and forth a little bit between myself and John Stewart, our business manager. John's going to have his back to you, so you're going to have the remote down on the table, but that's not because he's disrespectful to you.
I see that.
Also, Stuart, Stuart Weiss will be adding in some pieces along the way to our Director of Learning as well. So we welcome everyone to the conversation about our FY '16 budget.
Okay, I'm not finding it.
So first out of the gate, I think just to re-ground the board, again, I'm going to speak to the board specifically, because this is to the board.
Around our current budget.
This is label number three, but this is what you saw on December 17th. And again, there was a whole lot of detail that went with this on the 17th, and a lot of backup information that went with it, and it represents the 1.641020 amount on the increase. Again, what occurred here is we did not have, we did not have all of the available data yet in, particularly the common level of appraisal, we did not yet have in at that point. And so there were some general assumptions. The other part that went on here is that, obviously, we did have recognized contracts, and John's office, John and Amity particularly, moved forward those contracts into the, into the out years. So we wanted to just ground you here with this, and again, I want to let John talk a little bit to this. Anything that you'd like to add, John?
Oh, first off, it's not our recommended budget, but it's the baseline. In other words, what moved forward from continuing basically to do the same things with certain needs, knowing we had to do a roof and orchard and put that in the budget, that kind of thing. So we, we, like David said, we didn't know the common level appraisal, and we didn't know the number of equalized pupils at that point in time either. So those are, those are two big numbers that come from the state. By statute, the CLA has to be applied December 31st, and then equalized pupils came out on December 26th. So those things, and once again, these are, this, this is not going to be the, this is the fact where we were.
Yeah, so the, these sheets for people can be a little bit confusing, because we're going to show you another one that looks the same, although you're going to see a number change here. So again, obviously, the, the data, the numbers in here are different. But again, just to re-ground the board, this is what we shared with you back on December 17th. So what we're going to do now is, now you'll see a change, you'll see a change in the number. Again, you'll see that this is number four. This is the recommended budget. We are going to come to a number five in a bit, and we'll be sharing with you some of the specific reductions or additions that, that arrived us at, at this. Okay? Before we, before we go, I just want to just say a couple additional things around the work that we've done, central office and the administrative team, to get to where we are today. And that we, again, we're recommending this to the board, and we'll await feedback from the board around what is being presented. So the recommended budget being presented to you this evening represents the needed staffing levels and resources to continue to provide the students of the South Burlington School District the opportunity to successfully achieve the ends. Our multi-tiered system support, some of you also know that, is our MTSS, Multi-Year Plan out to 2020, coupled with student assessment results, supports our desired resource allocations within the district. As a district, we work to ensure that we are meeting the needs of students while complying with federal and state mandates and working to implement initiatives such as the Common Core Next Gen Science Standards, personal learning plans, proficiency-based graduation requirements, just to name a few. In our plan, we've also identified the need to make changes in our student information system and to update some of our technology infrastructure so that it supports student and staff needs. This budget also continues to support maintaining our facilities. Our Facility Stewardship Plan, as I said earlier, over the last seven years, has allowed us to better understand our current and forecasted needs and has permitted us to derive suggested strategies to allocate resources. One major area that we're working to address is our adherence to the Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. This budget, again, represents some trending, what I would say, towards more upper limits in some of our core classrooms, and uses those resources to redeploy in ways that can help make system changes. So you'll see some upper limit challenges and trending in some of the classrooms. So we're going to walk you through some of that, and I'll, again, be happy to take questions from the board as we go.
So David, can you just give a quick summary? I'm kind of looking at some of our typical indicators here.
Yep.
This would be looking at a residential tax rate with the CLA at 1.81%?
Right, that would be a 1.81% increase, just under 3 cents.
But the aggregate, aggregated increase to the budget over prior years, 3.27%?
That's correct, 3.27.
And can you explain less local revenue?
Yeah, so the, the revenue, again, you take the, the total, you minus the, the revenue, and we made, this is the, this is the difference, or 8.77% increase in revenue. The Act 68 is simply a subtraction, and then it arrives at that Act 68, which is also called the Draw From the Ed Fund, which is a 1.86% increase in, or an increase in the draw from the Ed Fund.
So under this proposal, we would be looking at, if you go to the, the box below, we stay below the excess spending threshold, so we avoid any double taxation?
Correct.
And we're looking at, based on average home values for homes versus condos, we're looking at a $96 increase and a $66 increase before income sensitivity?
That's correct.
Okay. And what of the state-level factors are estimated right now? And what of the state level factors are estimated right now?
The Vermont residential rate and the non-residential rate are recommended by the administration, the state tax commissioner. That was done on, by law, on December 1st.
Right.
And then the legislature could change that anytime through May. So that is something that could change. The legislature can also change the base education amount. So that, by statute, there's a cost of living allowance that, you see that went from 92.85 to 94.59. And that helps us, but that could change also.
So again, some things to note in this, you know, for those of you who have followed this in the past, as John articulated, you know, these are state factors that typically we wait for. That said, typically what we receive sticks most often. Now, probably that will create the jinx in the whole mix, but I hope not. The other part that's notable for us in South Burlington is our equalized pupils. And this, remember, is not exactly the number of students that are in our district. These are equalized, and that means that there's, you get either additions for individuals that are in secondary programs, you get addition percentage for English language learners, you get additions for individuals that are, you know, have other challenges. So there's some adders, and there are also portions in our early childhood education program for kids that receive preschool services for more than 10 hours are also part of that as a 0.46 add as well. So this represents 35 addition. Last year at this time, we were down, I can't remember the exact number.
15 or 16, right?
Yeah, and that's a direct correlation, obviously, to that cost.
And if you look at, do we have kind of absolute enrollment? Because enrollment is up over prior year.
Just, just, not much. And we'll take a look at that. I've included some of this information in your packet as well, as well as some of the information that you have from the McGibben report that I talked about in master planning and visioning. The current articulation of his data represents what we currently have as well. One big area of question around that enrollment, obviously, is connected to our students that are coming from the islands. And it happens to be, this evening, actually, Patrick Burke and a couple of his folks are up at the Georgia Elementary and Middle School with their job, with their high school fair, not college fair, high school fair. Any other questions? So we're going to walk you through some of these other things. Again, John and I, we've provided a calculator here a little bit if there's some questions that the board wants to go into, but we perhaps will move through some of this other data fairly quickly unless there's specific questions. So John, let me let you kind of wander through here the way you would like.
Right. Apologies, we'll make this bigger. So we're going to get into what local revenues, the components of those are in the next slide. This just kind of summarizes at the highest level where the funds will go under this scenario. So the four categories, four major categories are salaries, wages, up 2.71%, employee benefits up just over 2.5%, operating costs of 6.8, and then debt services slowly declining just because of interest payments are down. So that is, at the top level, that's where the costs have shifted a little bit or increased. We'll go right to the next slide on revenues. And these have not changed since our, remember, they look at the budget. And these are, if you look at the terminology in Act 68, these are local funds, but as you can see, then my first category is federal funds and then state funds, but they're funds that don't come from the state education tax fund. They're not, it's everything but property taxes, that component of our, of the state funding. And we have two areas that need to be, well, I would highlight. One is down at the bottom, the carryover number. Money that's left over from the fiscal year, two fiscal years before FY '14, by law, has to be carried over in this budget. So some districts have deficits, and so our carryover helps reduce taxes in the current year. And so that's one thing to look at. And then another thing that's, I guess, a blessing this year and something that we just talked about as far as enrollment goes and tuition from other districts, that's up 32.5%, 32.75%. We drew a lot of kids from Georgia, Franklin West School District, last year, and that's a key factor in helping reduce our taxes here. And tuition is something that's on the agenda to talk about this week. We'll talk about that a little bit later, and then we have to set that along with the budget next week on the 14th so that the other schools get their notice in time. Any questions on this?
What were some of the drivers in the upping costs, please?
Well, we'll get to them.
Oh, you can get them for us.
Just quickly, and it relates back and give me if I have missed something, but I know that there had been a concern about when money following the student, when they're coming here by choice or anything. How has that changed then? Are we getting our fair share on, is the money following the student?
Right. So good question, Pat. What John alluded to in that particular line was our tuition from communities that don't have a high school. And this happens to be our island students. This is North Hero, South Hero, Isle of Mott, Grand Isle, Georgia. They don't have a designated high school, they have choice. Those are those students. So that, Act 129 does not apply to them. The change in the law, 129, has had an effect on us. We were recipients of an agreement with area high schools where that happened, and now money doesn't follow them. We grandfathered, or there's a grandfathering clause currently in place that allows for those students that were entered into the program under those provisions of cost sharing, that would continue. However, anyone new into the system, no resources follow. And again, as we've identified with the legislature, we feel that that, with no resources following students, we don't feel that's appropriate. How much, you know, we're open to that discussion, but we've been very clear that we don't feel that that's appropriate.
Do we have a limitation then on the number of students that can come in?
There are, there is set criteria around those, around how many you can accept and or that total number allotment. So again, the board has to do this annually, and we struggle with that. I mean, I will say we struggle with that because we do believe, I think the board agrees that we want opportunities to be available for certainly our South Burlington kids, but we would also like to be an institution that allows for other kids to come too that may benefit. However, we also struggle with the cost, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
Pat, I put the screen up that shows our tuition and, under other sources, kind of small there, but the number is 67,000. That's what's the runout of the last year of funds that are coming in. At one point in time, that was $350,000. So wait, it's, answer your question.
I know it's been going down.
Yeah, and so for instance, one of the four areas, like this is our group of eighth grade, our seniors that are going to graduate, and you can see from Georgia, the population of kids that are freshmen, sophomore, and juniors. And right now, we're saying actually, I think, 10 coming next year, although that may be much higher than that. So we don't know. We also know, and again, the board's been clear about this, there's some volatility and risk for the district in our tuition, and Dan's been really vocal about that. This is a big number, and it's a big, it's a risk for us. It's also a great opportunity. It does allow us to keep some of our opportunities at the high school.
David, order of magnitude, I mean, we were also paying tuition for our students who were choosing to go elsewhere, too, correct?
Correct.
Do you recall what that has been?
It never was over $100,000. And it was in the neighborhood of 75 to 80.
So net-net, we kind of lost about 350,000 to 400,000 of tuition revenue through Act 129, but that netted out what we were paying, 75,000.
Yeah.
This, next page is kind of the history of our budget, just to put this recommendation into perspective and see how it measures. The increase in spending is 3.27%, and the tax increase would be 1.81% if it went as is right now. And you can see that in 2014 and 15, what went to the voters, what went to the voters was something higher than what actually was passed by the legislature. So in 2015, the data we had then indicated that our tax increase would be 8.27%, and it wound up being 6.15%.
We're moving through this, so again, feel free to stop us up if you have questions. We can go back as well.
Now, I just want to tell you, this, I'll make this, we can read this in a second, but we received feedback from two groups, the board saying, wow, what's the projection for 2015? So there's four columns just to show how that's been derived. And then Susan, we have the citizen budget group, and thank Susan's father, was a controller from Linden State, and he was nice enough to take time to look at our budget and provide some detailed, some constructive criticism, I guess. So thank you. And that's why we have the actuals for 2013 and 14 in there. On the other hand, to be able to present it right now, I'm going to hide some columns and try to focus on the recommended, the projected, and what we're proposing.
Well, while John's doing that, I think one of the easy things for people to say is that we know, at least the board knows, that we've had contractual agreements with teachers, administrators, support staff, and salaries and benefits. We know benefit increases, and so important to note that what's being represented in the increases or the proposed is obviously less, but there's a change in the cohort. There's always moving parts of the cohort, so it's not a direct correlation to, you know, percent increase in the contract to the total cohort. Also, in benefits, we have people that move around in the benefits as well, and so that's also a factor. If somebody's looking for a direct correlation, you aren't going to see that necessarily.
Are there any significant changes in staffing anticipated in any of those school groups?
Well, we've done, we've done some anticipation based on some historical past, and, you know, we don't have confirmed knowledge of retirements, but we...
No, that's not, that's, you know, if somebody's leaving and you're replacing with somebody, that's...
That's, we have that figured.
My question is, are the positions that are going to be added or positions that are going to be eliminated?
Yes, and so that does factor into here, and we're going to go through...
You're going to talk about that?
What those changes are, Dan, yeah.
Okay.
Right. The items of note that are outside of the 2% to 3% range are paraprofessionals, which the last time you saw it went up about 6%, but is down, down 3.64%, and that's because of what Dan just was asking, there's going to be some reductions enforced there as far as staffing. The, there's resets of lunchroom aides, which there just needs to be some more coverage there. We added some at the middle school, and we've added some in this recommended budget also based on what we heard from certain of the principals. Co-curricular salaries are based on the contract. There's two reasons for the increase, and I'll try to go in order, sorry I'm jumping around a little bit, but 7.44%. The co-curricular salaries index is based on the starting salary of a teacher. So whatever increase percentage came from our starting salary, starting teacher salary, that was rolled into the co-curricular scale. So for coaches and people who are advised, academic clubs at night, that kind of thing, that's what co-curricular salaries are involved in. There's, that's part of the equation of that going up. And the next part of that is we've added some, we've added a few positions there. One's activities director at the middle school, and some sophomore advisory at the high school. Those are the two that stick out in my mind, so.
John, can I back up and just ask you one question about the paraprofessionals?
Yes.
That's separate or part of special ed support? Is that different?
No, it's part of.
It's part of, so...
I mean, there are a few general paraprofessionals.
Who's just our support?
Who provide general classroom support to programs.
Right.
Yeah, so there are different, I mean, they're all under the same umbrella, but we have general, and then we have those that are identified specifically to serve students that are identified as on an IEP.
That was my understanding. So when you're, when that's changing, is that because of the amount of...
Yeah.
...special ed students per se, or just because you have a tough class, you need an extra hand?
Could be any of those.
Okay.
And we'll go through a little bit of that.
Okay.
Some of it's changing of students that are either moving on, and we would like them to become less dependent and more independent as part of, you know, our desire. Some are graduating or moving on, so they require obviously no addition, no more service in that, from us anyway, in that perspective. And then I would say that there are others that, other situations where we want to be mindful around how instruction is delivered. And in some cases, it may be better for us to look at direct, you know, doing more direct service through a special educator versus support. And so there's a combination of that, and we're going to get into a little bit of that. And again, the administrators and central office staff, particularly John Godak, who is our director of our support services, you know, really is very diligent about looking at those ratios and making sure that they're appropriate, but also in check. We'll talk more a little bit about that. Yeah, they kind of all, when we get to that slide of all the changes, it'll tie it together and they flip back and forth, so we'll keep track of that. See, paraprofessional and custodial substitutes are up 38%, and that's, part of that's our practice where if a person is a paraprofessional, the practice has changed over time where sometimes there weren't substitutes for paraprofessionals, and so we actively search a substitute in those cases. Others, they're, part of it's due to absenteeism, but based on our projection for last year, we thought it would be necessary to raise that amount, raise that high level.
We're also, you know, we're doing some different things in the custodial area. We're trying to be really mindful around overtime coverage, and again, part of the contractual agreement is to really be mindful about the custodians that take care of our day, our schools, on an evening basis, then don't get taxed to do a lot of the other events. And so, which also triggers sometimes overtime, so we're trying to be really mindful about how best to do that as well. And typically, we get into those situations where, again, we're not being really mindful of overtime coverage.
Right, and you see that building security down 21% here. That's directly correlated to our custodial subs. We have more subs in play, and they will do a lot of weekend work, so it, and we're looking at that overtime number, that's changed since you saw it before. We're trying to capture more of that overtime work so that while we... We're trying to capture more, more of that overtime work, so that, while we get an accurate picture of what's going on there. Long-term substitutes is another line, it's up fifteen percent. You know, one thing I did mention at our last board meeting was the family
Family medical leave.
David knows, can explain that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I I think, again, more work continues to be needed to study. And I would say to the, you know, the work with the demographer, we've had a demographer in the past. But looking at our cohort, you know, as any employer should, we definitely should better understand, probably, where our risks are associated. And we are an employer that takes care of our employees. They're afforded the rights that are allowed to them under the federal medical, you know, Family Medical Leave Act, and paternal medical leave, and all of the qualifying conditions. We've definitely seen an uptick in those in those areas. And they're, you know, we have to comply with that. And we could, we could go into more detail around, you know, looking at our cohort of entire staff and and what's going on there. But again, I don't want to be only age, you know, older age or younger age or middle age. There's, there's things that happen all the way along the way that constitute the need for us to deploy that. And when somebody's out, then it costs us, obviously, substitute cost for that. And in addition, there's other parts of the contract that are in there as well, around substit-, you know, the the other sub, this is not that line, this is long-term subs, but there's also just on how regular substitutes are there as well. So this does tie, and the board's been clear with me in the past, and our past was, we're really trying to bring this down into check. And a couple of things that we've done around substitute coordination is that we have worked hard to develop a a system, more of a system, that can better utilize, you know, substitutes, and making sure that we are, you know, holding firm to to the things that we need to. So, anyway, I don't know if there's specific questions.
You know, I would just make the observation on this, if you look at the aggregate total for substitutes of of just the, actually, I'm just looking at the additional estimated through two thousand fifteen. That's, that plus overtime. And when I look at that,
Mm-hmm.
it, to me, it's really a, an expense that's above a forecast, because you've got the actual through December, basically, and then you're putting encumbered in there.
Yep.
Which should be reflective of your run rate. So there's over four hundred thousand dollars in various substitutes and overtime. The district also makes a significant investment through VHI and wellness programs, through our own mindfulness programs, and has very generous accrual of sick days. So there, those taken in aggregate, I don't know if you look at all of those and say, are we serving our student population the best we can, creating or with what we're either evidencing or creating with a significant amount of, you know, time that people we want in the role or maybe not in the role?
Right.
I don't know how to say that anymore.
No, I, I, we, we want the teachers that we've hired to be in front of the kids the majority of the time. Is, and I get that clearly from from you, Elizabeth, and the board. Part of the work of the of our, and when they can't be, for for the valid reasons that are, that they're either exercising their contract or under family medical leave, we'd like to have the most qualified person. And part of our work with ASOP was, and again, we're we're going to continue to work around making sure that we have the the best individual in front of the students that allows the learning to happen. Right now, we're, I I'm saying we're perplexed. We've, we're looking at all the data, we're trying to, you know, make appropriate recommendations and plans for the future around how to make that, how to make that work, to answer all of it. Cost, we'd like to see costs go down, we'd like to see teachers be more present. We've talked about things around even childcare. I mean, sometimes it's a childcare-related issue, and if we do something different as an employer to, you know, to help buy, you know, help them to advocate for locations for care providers when a care provider has to shut down because of some circumstance, right? How can we maybe be a conduit to help some of that? So there's a lot of things in play right now. A lot of this is hard to get to the bottom, because a lot of it is protected information around family medical leave, for instance. You know, obviously, we're, we're, we obviously have to know about it, but it's protected information to be shared.
I I think the other thing, this has come up frequently enough, that I don't think the board really understands if we are out of whack comparatively. So at a, at a minimum, it might be helpful to understand
Yeah.
what's going on in, like, districts, so that we can get a, you know, I mean, the employee populations will not differ substantially.
Right.
I know that would be helpful
Sure.
information, because this, you know, I've been doing this nine years, and it's come up.
Nine years? Yeah, that's good. I I can tell you anecdotally, I mean, I've asked some of those questions to some of our surrounding areas, but but I can't, I don't have the exact data. I know it's a problem for for a lot of us, but I can find out.
I think one of the questions, David, that we continue to ask is really more around, yeah, we want, we definitely want teachers to be out when they're ill, and we understand that we want to be compliant with the laws that, you know, that are out there, but we want to understand if there's abuse of this of this system and the contract. And I don't think we've ever really
Yeah.
gotten the numbers around that to see if that, you know, not, certainly not person-specific, but what happens by building.
Yeah, it, I'm, again, we're going to continue to disaggregate and look at it. And I think, you know, now, again, some of you have had the opportunity to work with Karen. You know, she's very diligent about helping us to look at systems and ways in which we can call that out. This particular area, when we look at those, the substitute teacher line, you know, those are, those are areas that are not necessarily an area of abuse. Those are, those are confirmed, you know, approved, family medical leave or or paternity leave requests that are qualifying conditions that, you know, we could question, but they're physician, you know, related documents that we we can't question. You know, we obviously have an obligation, we have an opportunity to question and do all those things, which we do in in some cases, to make sure we know of, you know, when the return is, and we also have to have all the right paperwork to to return. But that's an area particularly that has has is 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 increasing.
And to me, Julie, you know, potential abuse is one of a laundry list of potential reasons this might be occurring. But I would even include, you know, caregivers of aging parents, for instance, because I know that's anecdotally information I've heard. But we also invest in an EAP program that's intended to link employees with resources that can help with issues like that. So I look at how the district has supported all staff being present and doing the jobs that they have, and I I kind of look at it and say, are we effectively using the resources
All those resources available.
to minimize incremental expense?
Is it at all possible to take, to have teachers paying for substitutes when they need one? For like a personal day, because that's how they schedule their doctor appointments, or whatever. You know, when they're taking just a personal day, and it's not a valid excuse, per se?
So it would be, it would be a change in practice, and again, some of these are contractually negotiated agreements. And so I would say nothing's off the table, but it would be, it would be back to the board and myself around talking about and negotiating how that can be resolved, so.
Might discourage them a little bit more, and just hazardous, maybe, personal days.
Yeah, and again, I don't, I I think it's important, I mean, I don't want to paint, it's it's an area of concern. The board's talked to me about this now the last couple of years, very aware of it. I don't want to say that it's it's outright singularly abuse, or or is. It's, it's definitely part of our our cohort of of staff, it's not just teachers, it's staff in general. And, you know, I do know that we, you know, as Elizabeth mentioned, EAP, we get the information from EAP, and it's actively being used, you know? So there's a variety of things that are going on that people are trying to work through, and, you know, that's where we're at.
Yeah, and I, can I just, I would just say, Susan, as as you've witnessed, changes to the contract are really difficult to make. So, for what it's worth.
Okay, I'm I'm going to move on.
Yeah, we're good.
We're into another significant part of our budget of almost ten million dollars, is our employee benefits. And this year, overall, it's it's not going up, well, it's going up two, two and a half percent, and that's three hundred, over, over three hundred thousand dollars. The health insurance is is a big one, and I've had to question from the board, why is that going up one point five percent when the rates are going up four and a half? And it's, it it has to do with the the mix of people, their situations. If you look at the health bill every, every month, there's at least ten changes of status in different people, whereas we know about the dependents can be on a a parent's health insurance plan until they're age twenty-six, but we have people who are actually twenty-six now and leaving, and all that kind of thing. So it's a, it's a snapshot at time. We don't, we don't adjust the health insurance in our budget for projections or anything like that. We budget, it seems to have been working out, budget at a snapshot in time. Another thing is, every employee group in the non-union will probably follow suit, is going to pay one more percent in health premiums next year from what they had before. So that, that tempers the increase a little bit. And, let's see, we're in the last year of dental insurance, we're essentially self-insured there, where we, there's limits on coverage and pretty cheap administrative fees where we are. But we, we know that our VHI plan has dental insurance now that they didn't have years back. So we're going to, that'll go out to bid next time, but we've projected that to be flat across the board. Social Security kind of follows wages, the MedifICA, and disability insurance is just the mix of people because of increase and that kind of thing. So I believe we have one more year of disability on our, on our plan. We go out for bid every three years on that. So that's where our employee health benefits are, it's almost ten million dollars, or nine and a half million dollars, so. The next line is, is
That's a good question.
Sure.
See, they, like, workers comp and disability, not, not to say huge amounts, but my understanding is that the the statewide, you know, workforce is, some very significant numbers within five years of retirement. Does the district have any flexibility in terms of, you know, managing the the mix?
Well, again, I would come back to that, Peter, in saying that, you know, part of negotiations, you know, for all of our groups is part, that's in part played with the board and myself around negotiating whether or not there's any sort of incentive, I'm assuming what you're meaning, around retirement options or anything like that. Certainly been, has been looked at by the district in the past. We definitely know our our cohort of employees and and where they are. In some cases, that doesn't necessarily result in in huge cost savings. But again, I think the board, you know, is certainly able to look at that at any time, but it's a
Yeah, and I think I can answer that, too, is we, we would have the option of negotiating that into a contract, but the the board and administration would reserve the right to offer a, a return incentive at any point in time outside of a contract. So we feel it's better not to include that in a contract at this point.
So purchase services is, you can see that it, are three points of reference on the chart that were down in the current year, but back up in the next year. Purchase services typically made up of mostly services for special education under individual education plans. And so in the current year, we've had some kids graduate or move out of the district, that kind of thing, and that's why it's, it's projected to be one point three, one million three hundred thirty-two thousand. But service plans are put together in the fall for the next year and sent off to the state for kids who have IEPs. And that's basically, the one point five million dollars is what's been sent off to the state and for our mix of kids that we know about. So it's actually down a little bit from, from budget, but up from actual. The next line is purchase technical services, and the, it's not in the board budget, but negotiations, and legal services will get to the board to look at those. These are our estimates of what could happen based on past experience. Negotiation services will be way down, because we don't have any contracts due in the next couple of years. But legal services are, have a range, if you add those two lines together, they range about a hundred thousand during the times where we don't have negotiations going on. So that's, that's where the difference, eighty-five percent decrease and the eleven percent increase. Audit services, we need to go out for bid, and we do that with the city. The city actually, city council picks the auditor, but we've worked together quite well on that over the last few years, so we may have a new auditor next year, and have to put some money in for that. Equipment repair and maintenance, there's additional money there for projectors. Projectors started being purchased five, six years ago, and every classroom essentially has one. And we've had to update, upgrade the, what we, what we do with projectors. They're they, they're not really repairable. Stuart, Stuart can tell a little, a little bit about that, but
Well, the other piece is that a lot of projectors were actually purchased not with budgeted money. You know, we ran courses in which some of the course reimbursement to teachers were projectors. We installed them and, you know, so that, it wasn't totally thought out then how you replaced them. You know, over time, we had a big influx, which was great educationally for the teachers and for the students, but now we really have to plan, and we're trying to build a responsible plan, because we've had, I think we had replaced fifteen this year out of contingency funds, because we didn't budget for it.
I know this is a dumb question, but on any equipment, because I know, you know, we've gone through cycles of technology like whiteboards and things like that, but do we do a utilization audit?
And how often?
Yeah, that actually is the other piece. We don't purchase any whiteboards anymore, because we found we're training people on using them, but the utilization, especially with remote access, with a with a mouse and a keyboard, you can do, can be tactile, but you can do with a screen almost everything you can do with a, or what most teachers do with a whiteboard. So, yeah, we, we, we do look at that and say, no, we're not buying just the shiny objects.
So are you talking the smart board, or like?
Smart board.
Yeah, the utilization was, the utilization, again, through the the work in in collecting information around the utilization also, we could do that on the backend, on the IT side, look at the utilization of the equipment, you know, desktops, we can look at how often they're turned on or used. And so that was in part in play, the the rationale for that. Again, I think to Stuart's point, you know, this is the same, you know, if we're going to purchase it, we got to have, you got to have a plan. You can't just, and again, that definitely did creep up on, through a course reimbursement process where they can be given equipment and and gifted to the school, but then, then the district owns it, has to maintain it.
I know we've had that issue with software and with maintenance.
That's right.
And I am so far behind on technology, I said whiteboard, not smart board.
I have a mission, Matt.
But, you know, smart boards were the thing at the time.
That's right.
So I think we just have to be disciplined about not
And we are more so all the time.
Can I, can we go back for a minute, sorry, to preschool expenses? So did you include in the budget the extra four hundred dollars, the extra?
The amount in there for one sixty, Act one sixty-six movement, yes, we did.
Right, and did you find, what about the ADM?
So the ADM remains the same at point four six, John, you'll have to help me on this, for anyone over ten hours. What it does allow us to do is to likely see an increase in our equalized pupil amount for next year. And so that's part of what the agency, Brad James, provided us when we had that analysis that we provided And so that's part of what the agency, Brad James, provided us when we had that analysis that we provided around the, the difference between 62 and 166. So it is factored in here. John, any-
But we're not, we're not required to do it, isn't that correct?
We're not, but again, what I proposed is that we do, and in this proposed budget, the recommended budget, is that we do move to 166. We're definitely one of the leaders in the, in this area. Remaining at the 2,600 is likely going to have an adverse effect when everyone around us is accepting the, the, the higher amount, right? I just lost the number. But, and at the same point, we can recognize the equalized pupil difference as a result as well. The big driver for Act 166, ideally for, for, for other districts, is that the startup cost, the ADM is included right out of the gate. Whereas when we started, we had to buffer that beginning. We had to, we had to eat that cost in the beginning before ADM began to kick in because it was a two-year lag average.
But is this, is this a fair example? I don't know how many students we've served with this, but Act 166 is universal pre-K.
Correct.
So what I'm seeing here is about a $70,000 incremental expense to the district for what was a, an unfunded legislative mandate. Is that accurate?
Not really, because we were allowed to, we were allowed to, the increase in number of students this year, we were allowed to report to the state. And they gave us credit without having to do a two-year smoothing or anything like that. So we did get some funding from the state.
So the incremental student count?
Yes, that's right.
So how, how much additional funding versus the 70,000?
The offset, you mean, the difference?
Do you have a rough idea?
The revenue.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's 14 kids times about $3,600. So it does, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the calculation, but it, it does, the additional cost is covered by the additional ADM.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's about half of it.
Half of it, well-
Half of it.
Okay.
Well, yeah, because we, we, this points out, the budget was 540, but our actual in the current year is 619 because we grew, we grew more kids in the current year than we had planned on.
And how many students do we serve?
About 235.
It's well, 210, which is, 235, and some of them are part-time.
No, that's true. And then we're about 33, 32 providers is what we currently have out there. And again, part of this is, is right, I think to Elizabeth's point, it's an unfunded mandate or, or initially, you know, the mandate that came out that, that walked us into that. I mean, we're definitely mindful and we are tracking our kindergarten readiness survey. There's definitely been some, you know, some trending in the right direction. There's definitely a movement by us and many others to make sure that there's information, available resources, not just district resources, but other community resources amount, making sure that, you know, children can be, can be ready to the best possible way to enter into our programs.
I just have a question about the purchased professional services, and I feel like I bring this up every year. But are we kind of tracking, you know, like a certain threshold so that if you get to a certain point, it would be more cost effective
Contract.
To, to have, bring up that professional on as a school district employee versus contracting out for all the services? And I just wondered if we look at those trends and how many kids serve it and-
We've gone through some of that in the past. We've gone with, you know, school psychologists contracted and, and again, we've, we've gone through a variety of those. We do look at the cost. I, I think it's always something that we're, we're going to stay on top of. Right now, we believe that, you know, with the recommended budget, we think we have the right ratios and we are looking at those costs associated. Often, sometimes people will say, well, it's easier to just do the contracted. But then availability to provide the service, to, to the continuity, you know, to bring somebody in sometimes at times when, you know, it doesn't fit their schedule. There's, there's a, there's some variability there that goes unnoticed.
And are those services reimbursable through EPSD?
Some are, some are. Diane, I, I couldn't tell you the exact percentage, you know, but I know that they are.
Okay. So purchase property services, a couple of things before we get to the plant repair. Plant repair.
Ooh, it's annoying.
There's, there's not much else, I just really-
You're trying to find something else in there. It's just like, it's just-
What else can I say, isn't it? In, in the preliminary budget, we had money, $200,000 in, in contingency for the high school area. And we moved it here in addition to 50,000, it was always there, already there, plus 30. So of the 200, or 518,000, we have three, 280 that's for access, their accessibility in, in line with the elevator project. The elevator project was approved by voters and the elevator project itself is, is about $600,000. And, but in order to get that done and provide, provide access from level one to level two and, and level meaning floor. We call it five floors, let's just call them five levels. From level one to two, there is no backup way to get there. So our architects, we've looked at it for three to four months as far as getting a plan together that will give access for kids in wheelchairs and make, have enough time to get the project done in, so the school is not interrupted or with minimal interruptions. To put the elevator in the middle of the school in the two months that we have from August, from June 15th until August 21st is basically impossible. And we've, we've talked with our architects and, and actually they've consulted with contractors to see how this would work. So rather than go into a project that's going to fail, we talked maybe six, eight weeks ago about doing it in phases. Now, I think what this really needs is slideshow and, and more detail. But I'm just saying that the current estimate for the construction to revamp the big picture room with a, so that there's a new hallway through there to the cafeteria and to build the elevator, the construction cost around $875,000. So we have 600,000 from the bond and we put 280 in here. And then, so that's, that's, that's why that's a big number.
I think to John's point, you know, right to the board, we, we actually yesterday just, you know, had our elevator meeting. One was to commission and put in place the middle school one and then to spend the remaining hour and a half or so talking about the high school one. And definitely the phase, we were definitely slighted to try to get the whole thing done in year one. But the, the, the issues of mitigation and, and ramping on the, within the, within the enrichment room and some of the abatement requirements that you have to do when you start to touch some of the stuff, no way could that work. We also talked about as an idea and option around moving the students into an alternative location and isolating that. And the cost to rent other locations or anything like that was also exorbitant. And so that's what drove us to phase one and two. We'll, we'll, we'll put a, I think we should make note of this and perhaps at the next meeting, if we have time, or the following one, we'll, we'll give you an update on, and some schematic drawings that will allow you to see a little bit about what we're talking about. Because it still is a very, very big project. It's very important to us. Obviously, all of our ADA compliance around our current configurations in the high school, the bathrooms, all of those things that we learned from the ADA report, which we're implementing into the, the stewardship plan are critically important. That does not mean that we don't have a working elevator. We have a working elevator that has been maintained, is properly, you know, inspected, et cetera. But it does not comply with ADA requirements at all. And it's a very complicated place. It's the only place you can put an elevator in the high school, given the configuration and the architectural design. You have 18-inch, you know, or two feet of floor elevation, three feet of floor elevation. You have five floors that you go to, actually more if you count some of the 18-inch stuff that we found out yesterday. So there's some real complications there. So anyway, we'll come, I think appropriate, we come back to the board with more detail specific to this elevator project. But this is the line item that addresses it.
I think we'll have that out Friday. It's not, because it's part of the budget. We also have the other projects that are in this, in this amount, which notably, the biggest one is a roof at Chamberlain School, which is $112,000 that, at least I don't feel should be deferred. I think it's used to-
And let me, let me pause a little bit on this for the board in that, you know, currently the board's putting forth resources to, to talk about master planning and visioning through the work of the task force to come up with a proposal, what that might look like, might be the exact same configuration into the long future or could be different. I am trying to be mindful around the stewardship planning, around not putting expenses out there that may never be able to be recouped if, if there is a change, if a school goes away, if something, it gets repurposed or something. So this, in this case, again, John, because we, we have really, really good records, we know our roofs, we have had them inspected, we know their useful life. We're, we're, in this case, we're, we're, we're in need to repla, repair it. We have rescheduled our stewardship plan several times. Dan was, again, went over that with us yesterday. And, you know, it's, it's a little risky to do a lot of deferring sometimes beyond its useful life. So we feel like we need to address that. Does any other questions for the board around this particular area before we move on?
No, I, I just think we will need some level of detail before we can approve a budget on that.
We'll give you some level. We won't want all of it because it would absolutely complicate you for sure with the, with the elevator stuff. Okay, John?
Okay, so there's insurance, which is property liability and vehicle insurance. And we, with another, I think, two-thirds of the districts in the state, supervisory unions anyway, have insurance with Vermont School Board Insurance Trust. And this is really the highest increase we've had in property insurance. But it's, it's a, it's a pool of all these, all the other districts. Other purchase services is the next category. It's down 20%. Part of it's because of tuition that we pay to other schools. And that's, some of that's special education, some of that, we don't have, we don't pay school choice to districts anymore. That's the 88%. We just have, sometimes there are billing issues that come up. So we put $5,000 in there just to see as a contingent line there. Our, we wanted to make the student transportation homeless line be reflective of what's happened in, in. So that's that very first line, it's up 49%. We've split costs with other districts for kids who are homeless but may reside somewhere else but come here. It's, it's, it's become quite an expense.
So can we report them?
Yes.
So it seems like we always ask questions about these based on the payables, about these particular, this line.
The homeless particular line.
And I always get the sense that we don't really have any control over that, is it true?
Yeah, we, we, we don't. I mean, to do any forecasting is, would be difficult because we don't necessarily know whom might become homeless. That's, that's a tough one to predict. What we do know is we need to comply with the law, which says that if a student resides, you know, in another location or becomes homeless and they're currently coming to us, then we have the, the obligation to allow them to continue that, to create stability for the child so that they aren't going, you know, I'm going to exaggerate, one week, one week, one week to different schools and no continuity of instruction. So that's, that's really the, the main, the main reason. And I think to John's point is to making, making it in the budget an identifiable area where, where you can see it as opposed to putting it in with, with other, with-
Are there any guidelines on, on this in that if a student, you know, I mean, my understanding is if a student was here for a week and then placed in permanent housing in another district, that we would still have an obligation to transport?
There's, there's transition times, Elizabeth, around, if they, if they are coming here and then seek permanent housing, then there's a transition period where they would, would go to the, to where their permanent home residence.
So there are some guidelines in place.
I, I will tell you that, you know, you know, we, we've definitely seen, you know, a lot of activity in this area. It's definitely, it's a concern, right? It's, it's a big concern for children receiving the necessary education that they need. And it's not easy for them either because we have to coordinate how to go get them and wherever they're currently residing. This, there's been a lot, a lot of legislative activity around trying to create areas where they can be more, more stable during their homeless period so that we aren't having to travel, I'm going to say, you know, 40 miles away to go get them and bring them back to where, where they are in their, in our schools. So there's been, that's a, that's a big cost. Okay, John?
Okay. How are we doing on time, Steve?
Pretty good.
Supplies and materials are, are, are pretty consistent. There's a couple I want to talk about, ground supplies, up 120%. We, we had a, a review of our playgrounds and we need to do a better job with mulching around the district, keeping, keeping mulch set and closing playgrounds if it's too frozen, not use the equipment. So that's, that's really what the change in the grounds, equipment, ground supplies is.
Mulching isn't aesthetic, it's about cushioning, just for people to be clear. Yeah, we'd like them to be aesthetically pleasing looking and well-cared-for, but working right. And they have to have the cushioning for kids to, to fall, you know, and like this weather right now when we had really cold, cold weather and then we have really freezing weather, that definitely, you can imagine, changes the absorption of the material.
There's no, there's no rules or guidelines as far as closing playgrounds. But what happens in the spring is, it happened this last year, the ground was frozen April 1st and April 3rd, it got up to 75, 80 degrees and the kids have been inside or not being able to use things. And we had a couple accidents, I mean, just, just schools-out program, you know, that kind of thing. So, and so we had a review, Visbit has a facility, I guess expert that comes around-
Playground inspector.
Playground inspector. And so that, not, not only that, but we, we found that our custodial supervisor was, we didn't have provision. He was doing on his own time at night, doing the best he could, but we need to ramp it up and make sure it gets done.
I don't mean to be flippant, that's a lot of mulch.
Well, it is. I think that, yes.
It's not, it's not-
It's a big space.
Yeah.
Space is. It's a big space.
Oh, God.
It's gotta be 12, oh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trusting you on that, John.
Okay. The, the software agreements, software maintenance is a big item down at 43% more. We have two, two different programs that are involved here. One is our student information system that's 17 years old and not being supported very well. What's lacking from a business office perspective is teachers cannot get information they need about kids on a timely basis without data they need on, on a student's history or academic progress or whatever, without a lot of sorting. And most of the time, they don't get what they need. The second part of this is a, a start of upgrading our HR and accounting system so that we get better information, better tracking of human resources data. That, that system is, is, is pretty good for finances, but isn't, not very functional for human resources.
Or, or tying together between the two, which is an important component for what we're wanting to do more of.
Right. Small equipment is, equipment's next. Basically, the, the biggest change in our computers is, we have a plan on replacing student, the 50735 account, it's up 4%. Is we have a plan to replace student and teacher computers across the district now. Either at the one-to-one program through grade seven through 12. program through grade seven through twelve, or grade six we have a plan and K five, there's an amount budgeted for computers every year. So, that's, that's that line. The next line, five oh seven four oh is up twenty-two percent, and the reason for that is we need to do upgrade to our, our switching that works our wireless, our network switches have, the wire, they're pretty out of date, and that's something, it's about fifty thousand dollars that we have in there, over and above what we did before. And there's a server replacement, that kind of thing, so, that's, that's why that equipment lines up.
John, can I go back to a second on the software and maintenance agreements?
Sure.
I think, you know, we've talked a lot about the opportunities to collaborate, at least within Chittenden County, on back office operations.
Mm-hmm.
To drive some efficiencies for total cost, and one of the things I know I've heard in feedback when I've talked to folks is, we're kind of all out of sync, and we all have a different process for evaluating.
Right.
Systems, so, our, our ability to coordinate, so we've invested in a comparable system, so we could even talk about, you know, coordinating back office operations even at a county level is limited by just our, our own internal district or SU process. When, when you look at this, are you working with other districts to sort of make an effort to land on similar software, at least that communicates?
Yeah. So, let me, let me, absolutely. So, as John said, there's a, there's a part of this that's the HR and the financial side, so we've put a plan together, and that's been one of my hopes and dreams, is that we, we know, we wouldn't all have to disaggregate data that then sends to the state. Ideally, there was a push to have the state, you know, come up with a system that would, would serve us all, hasn't happened. So, within Chittenden County, Karen, Dancher, and Ambry are working and going to collaborate with others, particularly, we know of some that are looking at some upgrades, maybe not at the same time, but maybe the year after us, or the year after that, so that we kind of get all on the same, what are we looking for, what are we trying to do, and when are you doing it, with the hope that we would perhaps, maybe within Champlain Valley or Chittenden County, develop and have the same system which we could then deploy to others, would be the hope. So, we are, we are working with, with others, at least communicating with others. I think there's an interest by others as well, because we spend an exorbitant amount of time at particular times of the year to send data.
Yeah.
And it takes a lot for us to, again, what I'm going to say, disaggregate it in the way that they want it.
Is there any, is there any direction coming from the secretary on?
Not, not yet, not that I know of. Again, it's something that, you know, we've talked about, at least, Chittenden County superintendents, definitely been talked about in the past around kind of state level need for, for some similarities around data systems.
There has been a committee, though, of the business managers and the Department of Education folks to put together a standardized chart of accounts that meets state and federal guidelines, and that is, a draft is out there, and that's one of the reasons that some districts, including ours, we didn't put, we just put money in to explore this this year, as far as maybe a down payment, rather than fund the whole thing, because we want to make sure that we're all in alignment and that's all set, so.
So, would the, would the three big systems be student tracking, HR, inclusive of payroll, and financial reporting, with those few?
That would be the end dream. That, that's, that's the, the end goal, I mean, there's some phasing going on within the plan, as John indicated, around what we might bring on. And again, there's organizations that are fairly big, Tyler, Tyler Technologies, I think, is, is one that's out there. We currently use some of them, they're phasing out our systems, they're not supporting them as much, I should say, and so, we definitely want to, we know we can't purchase the whole thing all at once, and as John said, there's some pieces that are working fine, but we want to, this is a longitudinal thing, not just a year, you know, one year solution.
Okay. Other crossing contingency, contingency number is down quite a bit from our preliminary, because we, we moved that up to the project at the high school. The contingency line is, it, right now compares what's left in contingency, so typically, that's about what we have set aside, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars for things that, that happen, the orchard.
Drainage problem.
Yes. And some, and some personnel issues, too, there's, just briefly, we, we have some trouble attracting people to our engineering, our computer jobs, because of our salary, and so, we're not, we, we have to figure out how to best deal that with Karen and Human Resources, but there's some money in there to look at that. There's also money, David, for position, it's, it's contingent, because you have to have a plan.
Right. And you'll hear me talk a little bit more about that, but part of this is, and I've talked a little bit to the board on whether it's our mindfulness program, our mentorship program, our alumni program, and having some more directional district leadership around how to make that all work. First of all, it's working well in many ways, but they're not necessarily all tied together, coordinated under the same umbrella, so, there's some, there's some resources here to address that. There may be some decreases in some, but there's also, at this point, I, I wanted to address and have a plan that can emerge to provide that next step district direction.
And just out of curiosity, what are the, what are the big groups or associations we pay dues to?
You're under, under the.
The first line.
First, yeah.
Five oh eight one oh.
Forty-three thousand.
Well, those are, those are, the, those would be board dues, right, John, those are.
Vermont School Board.
Those are.
That's, that's like thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's actually in our column, isn't it?
I'm, I'm drawing a blank on what's all in there, so I would have to say I have to look, but, I'm, I'm drawing a blank, too, frankly, because I.
Is that like superintendent association, principal association?
It could be VSA, VSBA, I, I, but I, I don't, I, you know, it could be all of those clumped together, and some of those are contractual associations, yeah. Let us let, we'll, we'll push that out.
I know the school, the business manager's about a hundred bucks.
Okay, that didn't swing in.
No, that, that wasn't it, but, there are some, there are some contractual things, and I'm, I'm sorry, I've drawn a blank.
That's okay, I've never asked a question on dues that's.
Right, right.
Now I'm glad I did.
That's a question that you couldn't answer, I'm surprised.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I'm getting around here.
That's good value on that, business managers.
There you go, that's one I know.
John, David, I have, just a quick question, because I know that Common Roots did a great job at raising funds for a bus.
Yes.
Has been ordered now. Can you tell us how that fits into the school district and the advantage? I mean, we're going to get some nice use of that as well.
Right, it's on order.
Yes.
So, it would be here in about two months, the, it would be used for schools out, for their field trips, they would be paying most of their mains. Also, for the school, it would be used for big picture programs, some of their transportation needs, and it would be for common routes for their field trips, and other, other things that they have planned, mostly with schools out, so it's a coordination of those two things.
Part, part of the need with, with the, with the need for the, the bus, and again, one would say, why do, I mean, why do you need a bus in particular schools out? We have, most of our buses are running at the time in which, you know, when the school's out, wanting to transport, so, there's always been this confliction around, we've got all of our buses traveling at times when the day ends at the elementary schools primarily, so they've not had the opportunity to do, to do what we would say, some of the field trips. Again, we have three locations, actually four locations with the middle school program, and so they've not had that, and that's been an area of interest for them. One thing that we've made clear is that it becomes district property and is maintained and it's budgeted, rather than have a one-off that just isn't, isn't done, and so we're, we're certainly.
Wasn't there also something that the state changed, that if you have like a tennis team of four or six kids, and they can't be transported by parents anymore, they have to be transported by the district?
It's part of that, but the main thing is that twelve passenger buses are legal for a school to drive, and that maxi van, or what they used to call them, Dodge Ram, I guess, but, and, and so, a bus is the, is the proper vehicle to transport kids to these programs, yes, so.
Kind of a great collaboration.
Yeah, certainly is.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so that's.
Moving on. Three point two seven percent, that's where it goes.
I had a question, John, on the, the projected two thousand fifteen finish is about three hundred thousand dollars favorable to the budget.
Yes.
So, what you're showing for two thousand sixteen doesn't take into account that favorability?
Uh, no, because, because I, I understand the, the question, we, that, if it holds up, would get transferred into the seventeen budget.
The following year, okay.
After the year closes.
Okay.
So, that would help to maintain our carryover that we have.
Okay, so, are we pretty confident that we're going to realize?
I'm, I'm pretty confident, yes, after going through the, the process, and on the revenue side, I haven't finished, but we, we did see this increase in students that wasn't anticipated in, in the numbers, so, beside the revenue and expense, we, we should be half a million dollars at least.
So, from, from a taxpayer standpoint, we already have just the ballpark, about three hundred thousand dollars of favorability going into the two thousand seventeen.
Right.
And that's after the hundred thousand dollars is paid back to the pension?
Yes, we, that's, that's included in this, so.
I thought, I thought the contingency had to go to two years forward, so wouldn't it go to the eighteen budget?
No, fiscal fifteen would close out.
Yeah.
And then we'd know at that number, so we could put it in next year's budget at this time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which is better, kind of standard.
That'd be seventeen.
About seventeen, yeah.
So, this, uh, number five now.
I have the question.
Number five is, this is the same number, but it's showing that one ninety-one, oh ninety-eight, oh eighty-nine reduction. So, this is the same as we, this is the same information that we just shared. What I do want to do, though, is just to take you through what were the reductions. Same amounts, Elizabeth asked some of those same questions around, what would, what would the cost be on the, the average home in Selzer Lincoln of three hundred and thirty thousand at the ninety-six or the condo? Same draw from the head fund, the one point eight, eight, eight six. So, what I want to do now is walk you through that, actually, Kathy, you have a question?
Well, I did, go ahead and finish, if I can ask that when you're, when you're done.
So, we're going to walk through the arrival of the hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar reduction. There's, things in brackets are actually reductions, and then those that don't have the brackets around them are, are additions, and they are noted as such. So, again, we're going to share in some of this, but we want to make this also the opportunity for you to ask, ask questions to me or to John or to Stuart. John?
Yeah, the first, the first three, you know, you get your, the baseline budget out there and you say, okay, do we really need this, this, and this? So, my staff over at Brake looked at that and, and did some checking with state numbers, and so, that's what the fifty-one thousand reduction is, it's, it was just back and forth in different line items, nothing spectacular, but just do, you know, doing diligence to make sure we're not, no numbers are padded unnecessarily, that kind of thing. And then our, our IT guy was helping write the, we have a report that we get on IT in its completeness, not just the one-to-one, and Steve Walker went through and said, boy, I made a mistake, I, I bought that equipment this year in, in the fifteen budget, so that's down thirty thousand dollars. And then we looked at our, our strategy of reducing our overtime on the building security, and Department of City came up with fifty-three hundred bucks. So, those are minor changes, they're kind of housekeeping, but it did, it did yield some good results, so that's what the first three are.
So, then, then we get into the, some of the staff reductions, and, you know, two reductions of paraprofessionals at the high school, again, in part, I mean, one of the things that, that John Godak, our Director of Support Services, is diligent about is looking at these ratios and making sure that we're in compliance with, with what the kind of recommended standard is, and we hold, I would say, in Selzer Lincoln, a gold standard around appropriate resourcing. One can always question that when there are things going on, but nonetheless, I mean, we, we really feel quite confident about the levels that we keep. Some of the reductions are as a result of students moving on, and again, it would be wrong for me to, you know, to specify those students that have been receiving services that no longer will be in our district, but again, this represents some changes that are happening within, within the school, both at the high school and at Rick Marcot. Clearly, there's some things going on that are not solely part of student changes, there's also some movement around looking at reductions and how best to place other resources, so, when we look at the, the variability and, and this number of students that we have, and the teachers or paraprofessionals, we want to keep those ratios appropriate. So, when we look at, you know, again, all of the, all of these, these is in part in play with that. A classroom teacher, and again, we're going, we're going to talk more, it's in part of your packet around looking at the allocated resources, I, I will tell you that this is a, this is a difficult, this is a difficult area, and what I, what I said in my opening remarks about really looking at, you know, this definitely is trending to the, to the more of the upper limit, but looking at how to deploy resources in a way that would help, that helps us meet our goals around MTSS, our math, our literacy support, where I know that it would be very beneficial to keep our class sizes, or your class size, if you're the teacher, lower by three, four students. I also know how important it is, as a district, to move along in some of the initiatives that we have, to have additional support whereby which we can provide professional knowledge and expertise, so that it gets dispersed accordingly, as opposed to just fixing a room or a classroom. And again, I, I'm, it's a delicate balance, but that's in part in play where the reduction. So, there's a reduction in the classroom teacher, and we'll look at that data in just a second, here at, at Marcot and here at Chamberlain. The, the amounts that we're using are, again, based on some historical data that we have that, again, this is not necessarily what would be realized, but this is what we're using in the budget as a, as a, you know, as a placeholder. Special education, again, this is at the high school, this is part in play a reduction, changes in some, in some student needs. This is, John addressed earlier around here at Cham, at, not here, but at Chamberlain, the need to support some lunch and recess, again, important part of the day, as we indicated, if you know, kids are off, it's an important part of their day, they need to be supervised appropriately, so this is putting some money there that's been addressed. Special education, again, there was a point eight reduction above, there's an add of a point two, again, that in part in play is, again, part of the moving, the needs of, of the school. Here, again, you, you saw the reduction in the teacher, you're seeing an increase in a point five math coach here at Rick Marcot, and that's in part in play around having us to ensure how we move along, some of the initiatives that we're trying to move along. And again, we know very, I know very clearly that the, the job for a classroom teacher, particularly with Common Core and all of the requirements that are coming along, are difficult, no question, but I, I, I help it more by providing this type of support than I do by a one-on-one fix. This is not necessarily easy, our administrators are strong advocates for the schools, which I, which I appreciate, so are our central office folks, but again, we, you know, again, with me, I think that there's a strong support around helping this area. I don't know, Stuart, if you want to add anything to.
Well, I, I just want to say that, you know, clearly this is about embedded professional development, people being in building, where we do have a math coach, which we have had at Chamberlain for years, we have really had results that have impacted, especially for those communities that, you know, historically haven't done as well, students in poverty and so on. And so, you know, we, we have a district-wide in math coach, we pay mostly with federal funds, who's trying to run to all five buildings, but just can't give the kind of support it's moving. It's moved us along in some great ways, but we feel just based on the results that we have, full-time Orchard, half-time at Marcot to start, would, would really improve. And math, as you know, you know, compared to our literacy scores, where we've had literacy teachers for years, you know, was lower.
So, again, moving on, there's a math coach here at .5, there's a, there's a total request for a 1.0 increase FTE at Orchard, again, based on their, their data and needs to receive some additional services in the area of math. Orchard, again, our ELL population, we've seen as a result of those numbers moving to support them, and again, very important to support them at the, you know, throughout the continuum, but certainly clearly important at the, at the lower level. So Orchard with a .3 ELL, English language learners, and also some addition at the high school as well, and we're seeing definitely that, that happen. We do not have, you know, this adds .2 FTE guidance at Orchard, again, with some of their, their changes in their demographics, that's definitely been recognized as, as a need. Summer help at Chamberlain, again, this is office, our office support people are, in particular at Chamberlain, are only school year, and so part of our availability around services is definitely, this has been recognized as a need. The contingency position, I addressed this earlier in, in the communication with, with, that John prompted, and from my perspective, again, although not totally defined here for you, is direct correlation to creating some alignment and, what I will say, some operational support at the district level to better organize the whole group of we belong in dealing with diversity, equity, and inclusion, dealing with our mindfulness work, dealing with our mentorship work, dealing with our alumni and development, dealing with foundation, is to put some directional leadership in here with an individual for a program that would allow for us to better coordinate that. Again, I don't wanna speak ill will of, of any one of those programs, but when we look at the umbrella over it, and, and how we can leverage some additional opportunities for that to grow, is, is part in play what that, that is. IT, one of the areas, and we can talk a little bit more about this, particularly, this is an area that we, we see as a need. Right now, we have two FTE allocations, although they're fragmented too, right? It's two FTE, although there's not two people, we have fragments of, of folks that provide information technology education. And this is definitely an area that's been discussed administratively around, as we move forward to personal learning plans, proficiency-based graduation, the influx and need to have systems in place by teachers and by students is going to require a significant uptick in, in response. Now, you would say that, well, that's pretty significant, or some of you may say that's not very significant. We do have two FTE currently associated, and they have done a very good job, I would say, with the district, although definitely there's competing needs, and we definitely see it at the high school and the middle school particularly. So this will give some focused attention in that area. I know you have questions, why don't I just finish the list and then open it up for, for questions? Marcot, as I said, there's a reduction in teacher, there's some math coach, and this is also in the area of special education. We reduce some par educators, this is in direct correlation with looking at that, that where do we add the instructional support to ensure that students are getting what they need throughout their, their education experience? Here's where the, and I'll turn it back over to John, actually, for the, for these last ones, but here's where you're gonna hear the elevator phase one come out, so, John?
I'd like to say the details, we'll get to the board Friday. The, we added $230,000, but we'd already been anticipating 200 in contingency, so it's, it's for that accessibility project at the high school. And then the last two were, we had overstated our facility equipment budget, our, we have three or four vehicles that facility leases, and we don't, we don't need all that, so we cut that. And then, there's been a little bit of reorganization in transportation we haven't talked about. One, we just had a Norm Lavelette, worked here 41 years, retired, he was our mechanic bus driver. And we, in the last three years, we hired Scott Allen to kind of be mentored by Norm. So when Norm decided to retire, we were ready. Scott is, we're attempting to have him just do maintenance on the buses. And sometimes, we're, we're really short on drivers now, so he had to drive today, I know. And that's not where we wanna be, we want him full-time in the garage. But also, we've got an agreement, a memorandum of understanding with the city for a three-month period to trade services and charge the same fee back and forth, to see how that works out. And I'm 100% confident it's gonna work out this time. And there are times where Scott, our mechanic, can't be in two places at once and needs the help of the city mechanics, and Scott can help with their work too, as time permits. So, that being said, we've also changed our office assistant classification so that he or she can take over in our, for our transportation director at a given point in time. Our transportation's office is open from six until?
Ten at night, sometimes.
Yes, ten at night, but every day it's open because we take kids at six o'clock back to the islands. So, it's just, it's people were, it, it was just something we needed to do, and so this, we reflected a little bit of savings here that we hadn't before. And that's, that's, this is the complete reconciliation from the last to this budget.
So questions from the board around what has been represented by the 191, if there's any questions out there about those either additions or reductions?
One fundamental issue I have around the way budgets are developed, and I think we've had this conversation before, is the baseline is already higher than the prior year. So, I really feel like we should be reflecting a budget over prior year versus reductions off of a baseline that hasn't really been approved in and of itself, that's higher than the prior year budget. So, I mean, I know we can get to those numbers, but I think the basic assumption that I think you led with was that we're preserving programs. And I know I've asked this question before, but are there programs that we should consider obsoleting in lieu of better programs? So, you don't need to answer that right now, but I, I feel like the, the base, reductions off a baseline is a little bit misleading.
Yeah.
So when we talk to the, the next round, when we talk about a proposed budget, I think it should always be relative to the prior year. I know it's a normal process we go through.
I do, the reason we wanna be transparent from what we did the preliminary to this point, so this, this isn't the complete change, it's just from that one point to the other. I, I think we'd be wrong if we didn't do this, I, maybe I don't understand.
Well, I think what, what you're seeing, what we see in the proposal, I think is, I think it's coming out to about a one and a half million dollar increase.
Just, just under, yeah?
And what you're, what you've shown is that there was a recommendation for an increase that was about $200,000 higher than that, and you're showing the reductions off of that.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, it wasn't a recommendation, it was just, if we continue with the same programs, this is what it would cost, that's why we, I was, we tried to be pretty clear last month that that was a baseline, if we just continued.
So I, I think there's a, no, I think there's some triangulation going on, I, I see what you're saying, Elizabeth, I definitely, I, I will tell you the way I, the way I went around arriving at this budget, while John and Amity were working on kind of the run-rate of the budget based on prior year, I was working with administrators around what it is that we need in central office, around where we are now, what do we need to be doing based on the day that we're receiving? So, some of the, the reflective work around the reallocation of resources in the classroom, talking about, you know, mentor, mentorship, mindfulness, were all things that were part of us looking at, you know, not just continuing to do what we've been doing, but to look at reallocation of our resources. At the same time, I would say that, that's over here, we had our prior year, our current year spending and prior year, and then matching that together with what, where are we gonna go? So I think there was some appropriate triangulation, I think it was the board's request, actually, to get kind of the run rate prior year history, which John provided and worked on. That was happening kind of at the same time we were doing our, our budget development, and so I, I found it to be helpful. We, we were trying to be very transparent about, you know, starting with what angle of the triangle, you know, for the board. And what we presented on the 17th was essentially, if we were to do exactly what we're doing now, with the contracts that you've recently settled, this is where you, this is where you would be, with some other known changes, obviously, that are in there. So, I, I hear you, I, I think we can perhaps clarify that, clarify that in, in our next, next week.
Well, I mean, ultimately, discussions with the community when we present the final budget have to be about increases over prior year.
Right.
So, I know this is an iterative step, but I often don't hear the assumption that all programs will continue moving forward, I think is, it's a way to benchmark where you'd be, but it doesn't address the issue, are we challenging ourselves?
Ours too.
About that. And, and then the only other, the fundamental question I have is, are enrollments flat and we're gonna be up for positions, based on what I'm seeing on the summary here? And I, I just have a concern about that. And at the end of the day, I think you, you've documented a lot of puts and takes based on need, and that's the way it may, it may sugar off, but I would just say, are enrollments flat and you're looking at a staff increase of a three, a four head count? Or FTEs, I should say?
Yep. So, yeah, and I, I would say that, positive or negative, student enrollment does not necessarily 100% correlate to staffing. With every, with every child, with every situation, there are, we have to, we do have to challenge ourselves around how best to, how best to accommodate them. I think this budget represents some of the challenges to say, you know, the classroom enrollment per, per student FTE is, is gonna go up a little bit. But at the same time, we're trying to do some things differently around how to better accommodate all staff so that all students can be successful. So we're looking at some of those systems, and those are some expenses that I probably could say, just don't do. But there's also a desire, from, from my perspective, around some unification of some similar practices that we know are working, based on our data and successes, for some of the Chamberlain work and our math work, how we can replicate that in, in a way that we know has benefited the district. So there's, there's some of those pieces as well. Attached also in, in your document, and this may be, this is not easy to read necessarily, but this is reflective of, of kind of where we've been and where we are. And you, and you can see some of the, some of the changes.
Not easy to read, yeah, I'm trying.
Right.
So, just to be clear about this.
Yep.
Here uses the terminology proposed, and prior you used terminology recommended, are they the same thing?
They, they, they really are, I mean, I think we've floated around.
So, the staffing numbers that you netted out over there are consistent with these staffing trends?
Yes, yeah. And I, I would, I, what I wanted to have up here is, you know, we have, part of our work over the last few years is to have more data available, real-time data, so we have a SQL server that actually updates off of School Master, so we have attendance data, we have our poverty information that changes all the time to allow administrators to look at resourcing, not just budget time, but throughout the year. And so this is, this is one of the, kind of the, the reports that I have available, as do the administrators have available to them.
So, the, I see in the high school, we talk about resident students, does that mean that these numbers don't include the tuition students?
So, in this particular slide, and you're on this one, Dan, these do not include the, the choice students.
Is there one that includes the choice and tuition students?
Yes.
We're educating all these people, right?
Correct, yeah. Again, I, and so the, under, so when you see grade nine, 10, 11, and 12, you see a line, tuition, Dan? And so under, they actually, you had 120.
Okay, so you can delete the word resident here?
Yeah, so it should say resident slash tuition line, you know?
Should just say SBA students, right?
Yes, they are all our students, that's important, and that's kind of why we've said it that way.
And when we compute ratios, do we use students, this number, or do we use equivalent students?
We have, we have a couple different things going on. We have weighted averages that factor in poverty, ELL, those, those adders.
By weighted, you mean the equivalent numbers?
Well, that could be considered similar to equalized, but it's not the same, equalized and weighted are different. And so typically, we, there's some different terminology, and I'd be happy to show you what, there's a, I have a whole nother spreadsheet that, that looks at that resourcing based on, if I was a school that had all ELL students as an elementary program, 100% ELL, my weighted average of student count would be higher. And so therefore, we would look to have additional resources for that school. So that's kind of how the weighted.
Yeah, my thrust is to try to find a way to be simple about this, because my sense is that the public is being sensitized to a few ratios.
Yeah.
Per pupil spending, and, but now you gotta understand what a, what a student is. So now we talk about, okay, what's the divisor in this? We, we know what the dividend, you know, we know what the numerator is, but we don't know what the denominator is.
So what, what you have on this sheet is, is, is no, no calculating, you know, averages or anything, this is, see, these are kids that sit in the seats, this, this data is. When you get into equalized data, that is not, that equalized number of students is not what the number of students are sitting in the seats, those are different. And weighted averages are also, and I, I'd be happy to share with you a little bit more of that detail. And state use different weighted pieces?
Yes, that's why, I mean, the problem, the problem is, is that we have a very simple number that's incredibly difficult to understand and explain, okay?
No question, and, and this is part in play about what we've talked about, both, you know, at the state level and, and locally around how we report data. And again, when you, when you want data, like, what's your student to teacher ratio, you might get one figure that has different factors, and that's been my issue for as long as I've been in education, that we don't have this, we aren't reporting the same, so.
But we're gonna get some guidance.
Yep, we, we hope, I mean, we hope, and particularly how people reported and how then allocated resources happen and are presented is also part of helping us to figure out how best to educate our children. This, again, walks you through kind of the FH TMS, and again, we're in this, we're in this, this is the, looking at actual and our projected. This factors in the number of teachers within sixth and seventh and eighth, and again, there's currently being no change in those, in those core staffing levels. This looks at, again, the, the students per core teacher, and so you can see that with, with their enrollment, again, we're not, we're, they're not impacting that much at all, basically staying about the same. One thing I will tell you is that we definitely are needing to pay attention to the, what's coming up with the new equity, the policy standards. EQS, help me out, I'm drawing a blank.
Proficiency-based.
Proficiency-based.
Personal learning.
Personal learning plans, all of those. Yes, Kathy?
It's been eating at me all night, I'm sorry, I tried not to ask this question, but the question won, and here I am, so there was no good time, now it's perfect. You actually had mentioned earlier that you added a position for sophomore advisory, or a part of a position, or some time, and I forget what slot that came out of, par of professional, maybe?
Athletics and co-curriculars.
Co-curriculars, okay. So my question is, with this new IEP for everybody system?
PLPS.
Personal or, same thing, really, almost, but how much, is, too many acronyms, too many acronyms.
Yes, we know that.
How, how, how much more in terms of administrative resources is that gonna cost the district? How much more of teachers out of classrooms is that gonna cost the district, and to what end to the students? I just, I think it's kind of a nice idea, that's like an elephant, I don't, it's, it seems huge to me, do you know what that's gonna look like?
We, we really, we don't, I mean, part of what we're working on is, is a central office and an administrative group on how we work to implement these requirements. And again, we, we do think that the, you know, these requirements are, are gonna play out to be appropriate, but again, I, and I'll speak for the board, there are concerns with every mandate that doesn't have funds attached to it is a huge concern. And there's a, there's definitely a trend where there's many mandates that come to us that are unfunded, and/or there are things that we currently do that we would say are not in our, our, our direct bucket, right? There, there are other areas of responsibility within our citizenry that should perhaps be helped support that. So, the, the money that is currently being allocated sophomore exhibition leadership, PLPs, those are, you're seeing some of that here, our IT person to help with PLP implementation, ITE person that was that I identified in there. Some of the, the sophomore advisory work is in part and play connected to the, to the work that we're trying to do, connected to the personal learning plans, et cetera. So, to tell you exactly what that cost is, you know, in summation, we, we could go back and look at definitely many of those, you know, many of those ads have that, have a direct correlation to that.
Because it's start, I mean, that's, it's, the mandate begins when, essentially, 2016, right? So, next year, we're going to have to know that.
Right. So, that, that's in part and play why we're, why we're looking at, again, you know, we, you don't go from zero to, to full implementation. We're trying to be, again, very mindful in the, in what I'm going to say, deployment or redeployment of some of our resources, both at the elementary level and at the high school level. We're not adding a significant, we're making some reductions in order to, to make some, some space to do some of those things. We're not giving every teacher, you know, an added person. We're looking at how, how do we do that and provide professional development in a more appropriate way to systematize the process. There's definitely an increased load that happens to the, to the classroom teacher as they work to transition from this to this. But again, we feel like, you know, right now, we're, we're mapping that out appropriately. Peter?
Yeah, Colin, this is more in the, in the vein of, you know, the master planning, but it's, it's, it's always timely in a budget context. And when I look at this, it's clearly, you know, personnel is, is the big, you know, cost driver always. And it's not always in, you know, in your control. You called, I think, a delicate balance. It's a dance. I, I get that. But I'm, you know, convinced there have to be fewer people engaged in the business of education in the future in order for that to not, you know, be poorer income, poorer results for students. It's got to be replaced with technology. And I see, we see that, the technology costs are going up. The other big factor is facilities. And we're dealing with, you know, we're trying to provide more and more services in outmoded facilities. And, you know, and again, we see that, and that's a challenge. I think we have an opportunity, and we need to all be mindful of it going forward, in that, as I said, a lot of teachers will be retiring. So, we can, we can replace individuals through attrition going forward. We may also have an opportunity to design and build a new facility in the near future that can be a lot more flexible. You know, with the, the demographic issues, we don't know how many students are going to, you know, show up at the doors.
Yeah. Well, again, I think you, you bring up some really good points, and I want to say, boy, you ought, you ought, I'd love to encourage you to come to some of the task force meetings. They are open to the public, and some of your ideas would be welcomed in. And I think you'd also enjoy hearing some of the conversations that are happening because some of them are very much like that. And again, as you heard earlier, I don't know if you were here earlier with the board, we've talked about the master planning and visioning process and kind of the, the steps that we're going to be going through in the time forward with that. But you're absolutely right. I, I don't, I don't think, the things that you're bringing up are certainly, from my perspective, part of the conversation in, in the move forward. Again, we have an obligation to continue to do, provide good service to our children. We definitely, I'm, I'm telling you that we're definitely cognizant, the board knows this, that everything we touch in our buildings, even, again, we're proud of our buildings, but they're costly. And sometimes because they're more than 50 years old, they're more costly than, than if they were, were on the younger side. So, we're, we're very mindful of that. And we're very mindful of the environment that we teach in and how, how that might be more flexible and the resources that are deployed. We have three elementary schools. I mean, some of those things all add into kind of the concerns that you, you address. So, point well taken.
I know you're reaching the end of the budget part, but I just want to give you a little time check.
Yep, good. Got it.
I have a quick question I should have asked at the time, but what's, do you know, John, how much are expenses on the bus leases?
Yeah, we, we pay 2.39% and it's in, it's in that equipment line, the total bus.
Is it, do we know, do you know what the dollar is on an annual basis?
About 140,000 dollars. Each bus, the sticker price on each bus is $85,000. So, I'll give you the exact.
Well, I'm just, I'm looking at sort of transportation expenses outside of what falls into other purchase services. And with that 140, we're close to about $800,000 a year of transportation expenses. And I know that's not a direct instruction item. I know it's been the practice of South Burlington to provide education, or provide transportation. But I, I would always ask, is that an appropriate investment?
And. We've asked it before. Actually, we have somebody that we're going to, we're going to actually do kind of what we'll say, a mini audit, right? You know, within the next couple of weeks, I'm going to meet with a woman, not next week, who has an awful lot of experience with a large school district and looking at resourcing and, and what might be the best option. So, we're eager to, to receive some of that feedback. I think you're right. We do get transportation funds that come, that we, that we get reimbursed for, but what is that cost benefit analysis? I will tell you that, you know, some of the other things that we're, that we're talking about is, right now, our drop time, our start time at the middle, at the elementary is our eight o'clock. And so, we have difficulty right now, and I, I can say that some people, oh, I maybe I shouldn't say that. But we have difficulty in getting our kids dropped off at eight at the elementary and getting our high middles to school on time. We also have been working diligently to make sure that kids have the proper nourishment before they come in. And obviously, we certainly encourage that that happen at home. But at an eight o'clock start time, even if you try to provide them, it doesn't happen. So, how can we perhaps provide them with an earlier drop-off? Be able to have them have breakfast, giving our buses more time to get, and less buses perhaps, to pick up kids to get them to an eight-thirty start time at the high middle run. So, those are some of the things that we're talking about, which, which may result in fewer numbers of buses needing to be in circulation. And again, this is all going to be talked about in more detail with the individual that we're interested in picking their names.
As well as utilization trends, too. I don't know if bus usage is up or down or the same.
Absolutely right. When we talk about, you know, manifest on, on AM trips and PM trips, fall season, I'm, I'm going to just pick a number. If you have 200 children participating in after-school activities, probably running the same buses. So, do we have a program that would basically allow you to know, you know, how many buses you need to run? And how can you communicate that to the kids? So, we're, we're, those are, those are, these are questions that, you know, we're interested to try to get, get more efficient at.
So, from the board's perspective, is, is the administration recommending number four or number five?
So, we're, we're recommending, really, number four is five. Number four is five. Five just gave you the details. I didn't want to cloud it with a, with that. And that maybe is confusing to you. So, we're recommending four and five.
Four reconcile with five.
Four, yeah.
Five just, five just as a trip back to how we.
Five, just trying to be supportive of. No, and the very last sheet was, John, can you just go to the very last sheet, which was the FDE allocation and requirements for, and again, I know Martin had asked, Martin had asked this some time ago.
This one here?
Yeah. And again, I have other data, and some of you, you can see, this is actually a copy off of the SQL server that I have reports that are now running in, in our real time. So, I have, you know, more, more details.
Do you have other data on the, on the middle and high school?
I do. And I, I can give you a lot more of that around the utilization. The, the previous slide showed some of the high school utilization per, per teacher. And again, with EQS coming along, we also need to be mindful of the numbers of students that high school teachers have on a total.
Just to remind you, previous English teachers could have only 100 students. Everybody else could have 150 of core teachers, math teachers, science teachers. Now, everybody's 100 students. So, you know, when you're talking about that flat enrollment, again, this is the rules that theoretically a math teacher who, I mean, we don't have 100 students per math teacher. We have closer to 137 students per math teacher. We'll be asking for waivers this year. We did in this budget increase to cover that, but that's something we're going to have to look at.
Now, was that a state mandate?
That's, that's in the EQS, that's part of it. That is.
We're not overly excited about that. We think that's going to put us in a little bit of a, a trouble bucket.
Which the state never mentions when they run those articles about the flat enrollment and the.
Yeah. And so, I mean, part of, you know, part of our challenge in this, in this area is, you know, definitely the redeployment of resources and looking at the, and looking at the uptick, definitely, this is just the breakdown of the core teachers to numbers of students. So, it, from what, from what, what Stuart just said, you know, is not directly correlated. You have to do a little bit of some, some math connected to that. But you can tell if I have, it doesn't take much for me to be over the 100 if I'm a core English teacher and my projected per student, you know, if I, obviously, I can't teach, you know, more than so many sections at that, at that, at that number. So.
And that's per average. So, you know, you could have a section with 17 kids and a section with 26 kids because the average is supposed to be 25 students per classroom, according to the EQS, for fourth grade up as the high, you know, or as the average. But, you know, so, again, they're not saying, boom, you know, you have 26, you can't do that.
So, I want, I want to, I want to be mindful of time. You know, this, I'm sure, you know, likely you'll have some feedback for me as well. When I said I'm trending towards the upper limits in some of the areas with some of the reductions to redeploy the resources in different places, definitely going from 19 core teachers to 18. And looking at some of these, again, these are, these are projected. This is off of the given work around looking at, you know, the numbers of students that are going to be moving 55 to 54, 66 to 68, and the averages. It definitely increases our, our student to teacher averages a little bit across the board. And certainly, you know, I'm, I'm wanting to make sure that you're aware of that. Okay?
I hope that that's related to the public. I just want to say that. The, what Stuart said about the cap with the, with the amount of students that teachers can have now, that should really be made clear so that it's, well, I mean, it seems like our hands are tied, don't you think?
Well, Kathy, the board definitely has been hearing about educational quality standards. Stuart's and Pat Burke and some of the high school have done, I, I think now probably three or four presentations. That doesn't mean that we're fully, we fully digested it, but we're working to implement it. And we absolutely have, we've been making that known. We, we may need to do more of that with this budget presentation as we move forward around communication, depending on what the board ends up wanting to move forward.
Any other questions from the public or the board? As, as always, thanks to John and David and the administrators for a lot of hard work on the budget development. I think we have quite a bit to digest. And when is our next scheduled?
So, we're on next, we're on next week. And then we're on the 20, so the next, next week really is to, to be doing some heavy lifting and approving. So, if there are questions that the board has, if there, I mean, I have some that, that need to get answered. We have some elevator information that we'll get out to you, as John said, on Friday, and some of your other questions answered. If there is some specific direction, maybe you can't come out of tonight, but what you'd like to see for next week, then I would appreciate, you know, kind of knowing that. This is, again, what I'm recommending to appropriately move forward the district.
You want us to just email you?
I'm happy to have that. And what I'll do is include everybody on, on, on the response and be able to walk into the next meeting with determining that. Likely what we'll have up is the recommended budget, and we'll have, you know, you know, we'll have some information that you can do some, some additions or deletions or whatever you want to do. Okay?
Good. All right. Thanks.
So, maybe, maybe while we're on this, can I go to the third bullet and just talk about budget communication? And then we'll go to tuition. Now, last, right now, we're, we're looking at what's, what are all the communication opportunities available at the schools? Last year, we did, you know, from plays to family fun nights to, to try to get out information to various, to the various community events. We went to pack dinner, you know, we had our regular staff meeting, budget presentations, et cetera. So, I don't know if there are changes to board requests. I'm going to hand you out, this will be probably confusing, but this is what we did last year. And so, you may want to just give me some feedback on whether you want to continue this or, or not.
So, does this also have, you know, letters and, I don't know, other letters or ads or what are we talking about?
I don't know that we.
For the other paper, leaflets?
I don't think we put the letters in here, Diane. It'd probably be a good idea. We didn't, we just did more of the presentations or the attending of events. I think it's right, though, to, we should, because we did a series of letters that went out in the other paper. You know, we had a paid ad that we, we put in. So.
Well, the paid, yeah, I guess I have a question I think I've raised earlier this season is how much advocacy we can do, because in the past, I've kind of misunderstood that we can't really encourage people to vote for the budget. We could only encourage people to vote on the budget.
No, that's not true.
Well, that's what I understand now. But I think in the past, that was what I misunderstood. I mean, if we have an advertisement and we pay money.
Say what you want.
Well, no, if we, if we have an advertisement and pay money from the school district, then we can't encourage a yes vote. But if it's an individual board member that's submitting a letter, then we, then we can't, yeah, this, this kind of thing.
That would count as the.
Yeah, that would count as our board, though. That's what we learned.
Well, but no, that's fine. But if that's not costing the district any money, we can still advocate, you know.
But we only get one.
We get one per month.
Right. I understand that part. But I'm just, I'm, it's just what that communication can be. This is the dry, you know, this is the facts, just the facts. We're not saying vote yes, although, you know.
I think the issue is that we can't, like, our administrators cannot say which way to vote. They can put information out there, but not say which way to vote. We can say, can't we? We can.
Well, I mean, this is part of kind of the, the rules. I mean, you have the opportunity as a board to say that this is a good budget. And, you know, we, we believe that it's right for us. And so, that constitutes, please, please vote yes. What we put out, what the administrators say, you know, is important that we support the information that you want out there. And so, this is the board budget. This, you know, we want to make sure that we're consistent. We need to be consistent with you. We don't want different messages going on within, within your organization. And so, that's really the important part. As far as the other paper rules.
Within, within, you mean the, within each school, when you see your.
Right. As far as the other paper rules, I, I would say I, I would need to re-clarify those. I, it, it happens cyclic. We, we go through this, and I think even my conversations in the past with them have, have changed. And I think actually for some of you, that's probably changed too. Like, we thought we could do this, and then, then there's been, then a change in practice.
But equally importantly, is I don't think we are allowed to spend budget money.
To vote to.
To promote voting yes.
That's correct.
That's my, that's my question. And, and this is budget money. But, but I, you know, but I want, I think this year particularly, given that there was the strike and given that there was like a backlash against the budget, that, that we have to explain that, you know, even though there was a strike, at the end of the strike, we did better than any other district as far as containing costs in, in Chittenden County. And, and rather than voting against the budget, you know, because people are upset about that, they should, should be encouraged to vote for the budget because in fact, we have been doing better as far as containing costs relative to, to what's going on in the state and in Chittenden County. And, and I think we should, that's kind of part of the plug that we need to, or not the plug, but that's just the facts. Although that is very much more advocacy for the budget than, than what we could put in.
So, I, I mean, I think what you're suggesting, Martin, is that we leverage any communication that might come from an individual board member via the local media, particularly the other paper. We know that reaches most of our community members to, to just take advantage of whatever the guidelines are to advocate for the budget. We ultimately recommend.
We want to be careful not to get tripped up if, if some, if one of you happened to say, oh, yeah, you know, happy to put a positive plug in for, you know, could be another board member for whatever. That, that counts as your monthly communication.
Well, yeah.
We've been burned there before. We know.
You know, I think we, again, part of the, the mapping of this, and what, what I want to say is that this represents last year's schedule.
Right.
We'll populate those with the events that we know that the administrators are currently doing that. And this is kind of what we've done. I think kind of what, what Martin was outlining was, would be the likeliness of an, of a letter that would begin to be formed that would essentially outline some of the things this budget represents and acknowledging some of the, some of the challenges. and acknowledging some of the challenges or some of the things that we've traveled through, you know?
Right.
From the strike containing costs.
It's my feeling that looking at these things and having stood at the sandwich board, we don't get enough to do this. I think it's a huge waste of our time. And I mean, I do.
But having a really.
Because I just.
Having, having information available.
I think that's different.
At the normal places and desks where there's, you know, places where people can pick them up.
That's fine.
That's fine. And I would say the PTO meetings definitely and sign me up for the Orchard one on Monday the 10th.
Yep.
One area that we get feedback on is outreach to community members and voters that do not have children in school. And I think we just have to challenge ourselves how we're going to do a better job at that.
One thing we may be able to lop onto, I mean, if we're going to, we're doing the work with master planning and visioning and the community survey outreach, maybe there's some opportunity to lop on to the same, you know, resource list to help inform that process too. I don't, you know, if we, we're paying for that service, I wonder if we could, how we might be able to capitalize on that data.
And I guess Pat, I'd ask you as well to give that some thought because I'm sure the city has.
Well, one of the things that I was going to suggest is, I think it's on the 24th is the energy kickoff piece. And there's going to be, I hope, a tremendous turnout for that and that certainly is going to be, I think, a broad range of ages will be there, not just those with, you know, with children in the school. I think the information that you're talking about getting out is so critical for, you know, for folks to have. I'm trying to think of other avenues that you could do that, you know, you're allowed to do and cost efficient.
We usually go to, I don't know that it's on, we usually do the senior luncheons, you know, that are at the city offices. That's actually become bigger as of recent of some of the upgrades. Peter?
That's what I was saying. Let's see, there's the numbers side of this, but the other side is speaking for myself and, you know, there are a lot of taxpayers who are just playing totally, you know, sickened by those whole process. It's far too complicated. It's, you know, the perception is that it's, that it's broken, you know, that nobody is, nobody's in control of it. And, you know, a lot of people are just going to vote no, you know, because they want to see the system change.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess, yeah, that, there is some of that certainly, but one of my concerns is misunderstanding what a vote would mean with respect to what happened with the strike and such. That's kind of one of the points that I think should be taken out of there, that it should be understood that in fact, we've done better than the other districts as far as containing costs. There's still that issue. There's, you know, that's a whole lot bigger issue.
My other suggestion would be to try to get a presentation for the Rotary and new stock going to business.
Yeah, we've done that one actually. Yes, the SBA newly formed, yeah.
Yeah, SBA, yeah. That one is coming up on the, when they're in, whoa.
Yeah.
It's out there and, no, they are meeting because they're doing a candidate's debate or form. It's on January such and such. I can't flip that tomorrow.
Yeah, that's good. Good feedback.
Well, one other thing is that I can, I have a couple contact names with Hillsbury and Allenwood and I can see if I can set up a time to go there and I'll let Dave know.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that. I have a couple, I actually have some family friends that are now there that I think would also help, you know, get in. The PAC has gone there before and so definitely I think that's a really good thing to do.
I think it might be worthwhile too. I mean, we had a standard presentation packet I think we developed last year. So when we get to that point, I think addressing the issues of the broader, you know, fixing a broken system and what that means to this year's vote. Because I do, you know, on one hand, if you just look at the tenor of the voter, it's a no vote is a way to send a message, you know, I'm mad as hell, I'm not going to take it anymore. However, we still have to run a school system and I think similar to your comments, there, you know, there may be some motivations that at the end of the day, you know, we still have 2,400 students to educate and that may be part of the message we deliver. And I know some of, this board's been particularly active with the legislature of late and maybe sharing some of those recommendations might be of assistance to the community in supporting this particular year's budget.
Peter, if you didn't get one of the, the board's has a brief up on the, I think the back that they have provided pretty broadly around some of the activity that they're trying to influence in the state. So that, that's it, yeah. I think you'd enjoy reading that and some of the work that's currently in play. Okay, so we'll make those changes. We're going to populate, although we won't populate necessarily. I think we'll still populate the information about having information available, but not board member presence.
We talked about talking to our student reps, they weren't here tonight, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll add, we can definitely add that.
And I know it's been brought up before, but better utilization of social media too.
Yeah.
I think we have several administrators who are pretty active, but maybe we ought to think about a.
Getting a.
A board.
Board Twitter.
Account and just.
So I am, I, as I said earlier, I'm trying to get that organized and get some training around what we need to do to set it up and then how we, and then how we can likely monitor it and, you know, respond to it. I mean, I don't want to create something that we, you know, no one's responding to that, that's a difficult thing, but I definitely think we have some expertise.
Well, the website's been a good venue, I know, but I'm, I wish our students were here, but maybe that's something we could leverage our student participation on.
And they might be able to help with the quick responses that are happening, yeah. Okay, that's good. So that's all I have on the communication plan. Let's move into the announced tuition rate and let me let John, again, I want to recognize that the board did receive a letter from the Grand Isle School District specifically addressing, you know, tuition rate and announcement and kind of providing you some of the concerns that they have. So John, do you want to walk the board through where we are with, and that's at their place, correct?
There's, yes, there's two sheets. I'm sorry, I shut the computer down. It takes five or 10 minutes.
Can I just share John, before the specifics on the letter that we received from the Grand Isle School District was really talking about their challenges around developing a budget using estimated tuition, which can unnecessarily inflate their budget or place them in a deficit situation. And then the invoices that they might get for tuition under charges occur during a different fiscal year and can also necessitate deficit spending. So what they're really proposing is that South Burlington High School charged sending schools the announced tuition or the average announced union high school tuition, whichever is less in a given year. And they point out that over the past four years, we have received tuition for an average of 18 Grand Isle students for a total of almost a million dollars in revenue. And their tuition represents more than 35% of their budget. So this is a district that's really, and we've seen this among other districts that don't have high schools, is really talking about should they be designating receiving schools and designating more than one receiving school as an alternative to offering high school choice. So this does have an impact and this is what I think some of the sending schools are wrestling with in terms of managing their budgets.
Yeah. So I want to let John just dig into this for you. One of the things that he and I talked about is to better understand what, you know, what are our costs associated with running a high school and what is it that their costs are in sending. And so when we look at that, they're stating 35% of their budget goes towards the high school tuition allocation. And for us, it's what, is it 30?
Well, 38.
Eight percent.
It varies from year to year.
So for us, if you take just that 35 to 38% average, you would say, hey, would you want to go out right now and work to do all of the work to run a high school? That may be considered a fairly, I don't know, an appropriate margin for sending our students away to a location. I definitely get it. I was in, I was in a district before where kids were always being sent out and it was a portion of the budget that sometimes we'd get our announced tuition that would be low and then the allowable would be a much higher correction and that would be something that would be, you know, quite a surprise to us. So we're certainly mindful of that and again, we've worked hard to collaborate and connect with Grand Isle and Georgia, well, the respectful, the respected boards in the islands as well as Georgia. But clearly we need, we have some work to do here. So John, can you, go ahead Diane.
Does that 38% include co-curricular stuff?
It was pretty, it was taken from our percentage of student enrollment and our cost for IT and ITE. So I, it wasn't, it wasn't a detailed in-depth analysis by any means.
So it did not include some things that might be there only because we have a high school?
Once again, I, it wasn't an in-depth analysis, so.
Right, because not every, not every student necessarily participates. Some do, some don't. So there could be adders and subtractors.
But as a percentage of the total budget, it's a percentage of the total budget.
It may be less. So maybe, it may be less than the 35, right? Than what we.
I don't know.
If we, if we look at it, by my student, but.
I guess you're saying that it's not wildly out aligned, but it could be plus or minus the 35%.
Plus or minus 30.
What I'm trying to do is understand whether it's really a deal for the tuition schools to come here or not, okay? And then on the other hand, I think we need to understand, is it really sensible for us to have tuition students or not? I understand the district would be smaller without tuition students, but that doesn't mean it's not a better deal.
Right. Certainly, and we're extremely mindful of wanting to provide articulate, informed, timely information to these districts, so.
Yeah, I appreciate their plight. I understand.
Do we have to ask for an estimate?
No, you do not. This is information for tonight. It would be decision for next time. Let me allow, again, John has put in a ton of hours on budget stuff and I'm very appreciative of that. So I, and also your time to digest all of this, but let John walk through this and let us answer any questions you might have.
I do see some of the school board meetings from around Grand Isle and Chittenden County. And I did see some of their complaints, some of their issues, I mean, I'm not saying complaints, issues that they have up there, so. But one of the issues is that occasionally it's below the mark. Someone announces a tuition that's below what's allowable and then we send a bill. And so in 2013, the district did send bills out because we had missed the mark in our announcement. In 2014, if you look at the sheet, we were, we announced a tuition rate of 14,367 and the allowed rate came at 14,480. So we were, it's pretty close. We're doing this, there's a formula we're going to put in now. We're going to use our recommended number for the budget, but I'm not sure that that's going to be the number that's approved, but we have to use some guesswork now and we'll put, do the formula to give a recommendation for next week. In current, 2015, we increased our tuition 3% and then in 2016, I'm not sure. What I did here was just take the 15 rate and use our increase and draw from the Ed Fund of, it's not very big this year, less than 1%, but that's just to give you somewhere to park, to be thinking about this. The second issue is how good are our projections for tuition that we use for revenue? And currently we have 123 kids coming here from districts, other districts that we're billing for. And I projected based on that, based on 20 kids leaving and 20 kids coming back in, kind of keeping the enrollment constant, that would generate about 1.8 million dollars. And I used a tuition rate of 14,650, but once again, we have to make an estimate of what that tuition will be and I didn't want to push it any harder than we have and I, so those are a couple of things I did to temper it a little bit.
So, sorry, it was, you actually decreased tuition?
Only for estimating for our revenue win.
Oh, okay.
You know, what happens is sometimes the students are going to come to Colchester, are going to come to South Burlington and one of their friends goes to Colchester or it's a last minute change. So it's a little prickly to.
It's a little bit of a moving, to moving targets too.
So I never want to push this harder than I need to, but I want to be as accurate as possible. So those two, I want to show you perspective, how many kids are coming and what the dollar amount is, what the history has been. And then on the next page, back to 2014, that's the best information I have is where we stand as far as tuition goes. The allowable tuition, we were not the highest, but we were higher than Essex, Colchester, Mount Mansfield and Milton, who are people who, districts that would tend to draw students from either Grand Isle Supervisor Union or Franklin West, Georgia. So just to refresh us to see, okay, well, where are we? And especially if a district is thinking of designating one or two, what's the criteria they're going to use, that kind of thing.
Just a quick question, Essex, Colchester, Mount Mansfield, Milton, do they all have one-to-one programs as well?
No. No, Colchester has a bus service.
No, I mean laptop one-to-one.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Oh, the bus.
Colchester has a, like we do, but not as extensive bus service. They don't have one-to-one.
But Essex does.
Essex has some, they have one-to-one, although not 100% implemented.
I've watched some of those island meetings too.
They do provide bus services.
It's my take from that, that most of those kids go to South Burlington or Essex.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. I do, I do know from being a resident of Colchester that it's a concerted effort again on Colchester's part, which it hadn't been the last two years, to garner some of these kids.
Right.
Yeah. Garnering the kids, I mean, you have some factors in play. You have community interest in budgeting and then you have parental and student interest in program offerings and you have also interest in geographic location where mom, dad, guardian might work. And so that's a part in play where we're at.
Can you just remind us when the allowed rate actually gets set?
Oh, not till the audit's done.
Not till the audit's done.
It's not till, in other words, we set this January 15th of 2015.
Right.
The allowed rate comes out in October of 2016, after the year's over.
That's helpful.
I'm saying that, right? Yes, yes. So that's why, that's why it's an issue with these districts that send, because the bill could change.
Yeah.
Is that because there are some things that aren't allowed to be included, some expenses we incurred that aren't allowed to be included?
Well, the allowed, the allowed is based on actual, so if we don't manage our budget, that could be a factor. It's not exact.
But is it essentially the same as the PPS that we count on?
No, it's a formula that separates primary schools from secondary schools and then you allocate certain district expenses are allowed and certain aren't. That service is not allowed to be allocated to the, so they're not paying for our elevators.
But if nobody but high school students come, we use a rate that's the blurred rate over the whole district?
No.
For allowable?
No, we, we set a separate rate for high school and for elementary. We don't have any kids that use the elementary rates.
Well, it seems here that we do seven through 12.
Yeah, secondary schools. In other words, there could be some middle school kids too.
So this will come before us for action next meeting?
Yes.
So next week or?
Should be our next meeting, I believe. Is that right?
It definitely has to be the next meeting because by law we have to get it to the, notify the districts on the 15th and we're stuck with the current rate.
Yeah, it's on there. Okay, so I'm going to make a recommendation that we move the next administrative report to another time. I'm not sure that we can embed it in the next time, but we can talk about it. I think right now we're, we're close to our end time and we're at needing to spend some time on number 10, which I know you have reviewed before. So that would be. on number 10, which I know you have reviewed before, so that would be my recommendation. I don't know if that's.
Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll move on to agenda item 10, executive limitations policy monitoring on 2.0 global executive constraint.
So that's in your packet.
I think that I agree to the question of what do you mean by interpretation of that last bit.
Correct.
I myself was, I was fine with the interpretation, I was fine with the evidence that you offered. Let me address my concern that I had at the last meeting.
Last meeting, okay.
I don't know if that cuts through at.
Yeah, I actually had an issue with interpretation.
Wow, all right.
Elizabeth!
Changing hats here now, this is great.
I know. Well, it was a little bit of like, I interpret continuous improvement process to mean, but we're in a state of continuous improvement, so my suggestion there was something to the effect of that we actively seek areas to improve and put processes in place to change and monitor them.
I must have been half asleep when I read that, because, you know, I'm embarrassed that I didn't catch it.
No, they don't like my.
This is just a test of what you were, if you were paying attention.
Yeah. That sounds good, politician. So that would just be my suggestion to have it reflect.
I like that better.
I think we intended to do.
Yeah.
So we can't take action, then?
Nope.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to setting the agendas for the 14th.
So we have budget in here, and we've given it, you know, a good chunk of time, which I think we got to keep. We just talked about deferring integrated data system, and we, and I don't think 2.0 will take that much time if those changes are acceptable. So probably those two things could be added on there, certainly 2.0 could. I'm not so sure about integrated data on this meeting.
I think I might recommend, since this is an extra meeting, that a lot of the focus be on budget.
Agreed.
And we'll keep, you want to keep 2.0 on?
I'll keep 2.0 on, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
And I would just say to my fellow colleagues, this is the opportunity to recommend a salary increase.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, so we do have, I think, one of the things that John suggested is perhaps we'll push out a board, a board budget, and let you kind of look that over so that you'll be prepared to, you know, act on it next meeting.
So, Pat, how much are you guys making on the council now, just so we?
How much are we making on the?
Yeah, yeah, on the council, so when we decide that we.
She doesn't know.
Not enough.
I know that.
I think we're at 25 cents a meeting right now.
No, I don't think we make that much.
All right.
You gotta go by the hour.
No.
No.
The proposed agenda for January 22nd?
So we can pull over integrated data, at least as a placekeeper here. I don't, I need to do some evaluating of the time. And I'm probably missing something that we said we wanted to carry forward, but I'll look at my notes when we do that.
I think that was the big one.
Unless there's something you're missing.
All right, do you want to speak briefly on the future agenda items?
Sure. So, again, in the spirit of kind of the board's desire, and I like, you know, the questions that have come up, you know, around wanting more information, and I know Diane, I'm looking at you because you've always been the placekeeper and wanted to keep us on target around how we're going to get that information. What I'm proposing, and I think we talked about this briefly, is under the future agenda items, where there are those topics, and they're not all necessarily that way, like performance evaluation, et cetera, that they're targeted, actually, that one does have that one. I've placed beside it where I think the right monitoring report where that would be contained. So I would encourage you to assist me if you think differently around whether or not those monitoring reports would be the right place to park those particular areas, and then I would work to integrate that information into my, into those reports and evidence that's been provided for, you know. And so that's kind of, you know, trying to think on the policy governance lens, some of this, I tried to get clarity from Harry and some of the VSB group, but I didn't get a lot of clarity, so I think this is, this may work for us. I'm going to continue to ask what others are doing and when other items like this come up. That'd be my recommendation, and I'm happy to receive some feedback from you around whether you disagree or not, and you might want it just to be a one-off. But again, my proposal is to follow our calendar. We may want to retool the calendar once this gets, these get added, but that would be my recommendation, so they'll be on there. We'll keep them on there until they get reported in the monitoring report, and if it's suitable, then you can, we can take them off at that time.
I think it's a great idea, because then we know that those items will be covered. At the same time, I also think there should be some flexibility, just in case, you know, there's a new topic that comes up that we need to be briefed on and have to get it on an agenda, and maybe it would fit into a monitoring report, but that monitoring report's not due for six months. So just as long as there's some flexibility.
So it could be a little bit of information and more to follow in the monitoring report.
Yeah.
And I also want to say that there probably are some items that are going to come up that, they aren't going to fit, and we just, you know. So I don't want to try to say that everything will get plugged into a monitoring report, but this, the items that you identified, I think, seem to work.
For example, the F-35s are still on the agenda, you probably wouldn't want to put that in the monitor.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to the, considering the minutes of the December 17th meeting, any recommendations for change? If by consensus, those are approved. Any questions on AP order 24? All right, and we have an action required on AP order check two, is it Naclian Chase?
Correct.
In the amount of $74,563.
This is specific to the elevator project at the middle school, and part of the action is anything over $50,000 that requires board action.
I move to approve the payment, the order to Naclian Chase.
Second.
All in favor?
Both.
Hi.
Thank you.
And we have board self-evaluation, if we can provide that to Martin.
We had, you can tell if you're disagreeing or agreeing when you put right on your side, but okay.
I have an issue.
The board followed the principles of policy governance focusing on establishing general expectations with appropriate limitations aligned administration to focus on the operational details. We have a disagree on that, that we did not, in fact, do that, and we also didn't prioritize and move things from the parking lot. As for the superintendent feedback, we did, we had a disagree on the not having the agenda allow sufficient time. In fact, we had a couple disagrees on that one. And we had a couple disagrees on the data reports not being provided in advance in support of its deliberations and such. And I think in the future, I think there's a comment that we need to allocate more time for budget discussion. If we're going to have budget on the list, it's going to take a lot of time. All right?
Any other comments, questions?
Only one thing I wanted to identify by the board's side was the information on staff retirement system update, and you'll see this, so you have this?
Yeah.
And we'll include it in, not the next one, probably the following board under superintendent's report. You'll see that information, so you can talk about it.
All right.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you.